... states of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First word of business is approval of minutes and everybody should have a copy of both the regular session on October 23rd as well as the executive session.
So moved?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? That talks to read correspondence to me.
We do. We have a letter addressed to myself from the Independent Association of Independent Football Officials. Dear Dr. Thompson, it's a great deal of pleasure that I notify you that many Lopes of the Norwood High School head football coach has been selected as the Association of Independent School Football Officials' Coach of the Year for the 2019 season. We believe that Coach Lopes sets a proper atmosphere that enables this program to produce young men who are well-trained in football skills and ready to take place in today's challenging society. We further believe that good coaches are an extension of the classroom experience and the values learned are lifelong. Coach Lopes embodies the qualities of what an excellent high school educator-coach is in our world today. We'd like to extend an invitation to as many Norwood people who'd like to join us at our annual banquet where we'll be making Coach of the Year presentation, that is Wednesday, November 13th, at the Abboton Ale House and Grill in Abboton, and it starts at 6:15. If anyone's interested, I have more information for you, and it is Italian. So if you have any questions, let me know, but congratulations to Coach Lopes for that honor.
Thank you. Any further, first one is up this time?
Not at this time.
Okay. Next is warrants, and I do have some revised copies from what you have on your desk, so I'm relieved, it'll be a little different, I'm not messing it up again. So we have two payable warrants, first in the amount of $96,685.37, the second in the amount of $1,545,876.44, and we have a number of accounts payable in the amounts of $31,252.42 for buildings and grounds, the rest are straight accounts available. First for $3,560.93, oh, $356,093.92, $93,993.90, $88,481.75, $94,160.77, $22,394.47, $62,314.11, $1.11, $1,288.99, $10,888.54, and lastly, $11,290.81 for a grand total of $2,414,642.66. I just ask the committee to sign the warrants behind me before you leave. At this time, it's public forum. Is there anybody here to speak with us in the forums? See you then. Public forum is closed. Now we are on to announcements.
Yes, just quickly, at your desk you'll see our official list from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed for our class of 2020 recipients of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. I'm pleased to report that we had 62 of our high school seniors be recognized for that. That represents 25 percent of the class, and the qualifications in order to receive the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, which is where students can receive a free tuition at a Massachusetts State College or University, advanced in at least one MCAS test, advanced or provision in two other MCAS tests, ranked in the highest 25 percent in district-based ELA math and science and technology test results. So congratulations to them. These names will be posted, and they will be recognized letters will be going home. So I just wanted to make sure you guys got a copy of that. Congratulations to all of them.
So if it's okay, committee, I just want to change up one small thing on our agenda and have Mr. Brent join us first with the field trip request. I don't anticipate this to take very long, and then he won't have to spend too much of this Sunday night with us. So Mr. Brent, welcome.
Thank you.
So you're here to talk to us about the three of our field trips tonight, is that correct?
No, just two.
Just two? Oh, okay.
The other one is the Maggots. That's just what I own for the day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the first one is a repeat of last year's student exchange program. We're still in the preliminary planning process as far as getting approvals from the other school district. Last year we went to Carlsbad, California. This year we're requesting on Cooper City, Florida, down in Broward County, where I graduated high school way back in 1990. But it's a wonderful community that I grew up in, and I have a lot of educator friends out there, thought it would be a pretty nice connection. They are the sixth-largest school district in the country, so it's going slow as far as we've got to work through their exchange department, as a matter of fact. So I just thought we'd get that going now, we're requesting to send a student during the February break, so they won't miss any school. That's sort of the game plan. Everything else is pretty much the same, we'll be planning out some activities for the student, they'll be going to school with a paired student from Cooper City, and then we'll receive that student for a week or so here. I know hockey season is important to the students I think that we're going to select, so we'll probably try to work around a little bit of that schedule, but we don't anticipate too many problems.
Any questions, public committee? Is there a motion to approve this field trip?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Right. All right. And the second one is the field trip we've been doing, I think this is going to be, well this is my eighth time taking the students. I think they went for four or five times before I got here, and I've been personally taking students to this convention, I think it's been my fifteenth time. So it's a wonderful experience, it's a couple days where they get to network with their peers from around the country. Kids are coming from all 50 states. This year we're in DC to kick off the election season, should be pretty exciting, we have lots of connections with media in that area. Thing that's different this year is we're going to take a bus since we're close, that will enable us to have some transportation while we're there, do some sightseeing, also gives us some flexibility as far as students not being able to go because of grades and things like that, because they're not locked into airplane flights. So that's the real only difference. So we'll leave on a Wednesday morning, bright and early, and we'll be back late on a Sunday night. We're going to be using the USA Student Travel Agency like we did last year, they've got quite a bit of insurance for liability and consumer protection, and I don't know, we've been working with them for a couple years now, they've planned it out real nice for us, keep me in the loop. Right now, we're just sort of planning the deposits and getting kids ready to sign up.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
So then comes the third one that was in for the Maggots, our December 21st?
Yes. Yep, so they've been invited to go down and partake in sitting at the Elms Mansion in Newport, it's just for the day, but it is out of state, so it doesn't need school committee approval, and you can see the list of participants on the right. You're going to leave at 3:30 AM, so even come home that night, so they are not missing school.
Is that Saturday as well?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Do you have any questions?
Just the cost? If it's going by bus and the cost is none, how is that cost being covered?
Well, I do not believe, well, I would guess that there was not any cost, or it was being covered by somebody else, but that would be a guess. Cost, it says none on there, there is no cost. So I'm not quite sure whether the Newport Mansions is providing the bus transportation, or whether it's through some other source.
Through the PMA or something, maybe?
Yeah.
Maybe it's named to the music association.
There's my question. That was my only question.
All right, any further questions? All in favor? So now we are on to our appearances, where we're going to be discussing more about the Green Communities Project. If you'd like to join us again, you certainly are not going to not join us. You should probably get the second MVP, I know I said Mr. Riley was the school committee MVP, but so are you. Is that why you couldn't join us?
I just want to thank the committees for seeing me tonight, and I first do want to apologize for the late delivery of the actual energy reduction plan. Not to give a whole big background, but you know, elements of getting here have happened, have been going on for a few years, but they actually ramp up the work to get the energy reduction plan going. Typically towns will go and have a technical assistance grant with the regional planning agency. We applied for that probably back in May, and was awarded in July. Funding got delayed for about two to three months, we didn't actually get to start working with our consultant from MIPC until early October. So everything's been kind of ramped up the past month to really get this to you, and in order to try to meet the deadline of, at least trying to meet with you guys maybe twice, if need be, to both go over the plan and hopefully seek approval, we got what we could get to you before the four. So I do apologize for the late submission of work, you know, I always get on developers for planning board, we never like to get stuff late, and it's always, you know, definitely makes the process a little bit more difficult, so I do apologize for that. In order to get going with that, so if you did take a look at the plan, there's a lot of good material in there, I do, one of the big things that I think you should take away is that Excel table, that was one of the attachments I sent out, I believe, on Friday. So this in kind of, you know, general terms is basically what we're looking to follow within the next five years. These projects equate to our 20 percent energy reduction, a little bit more, so there is some room to either not do some projects, or there is some wiggle room, let's put it that way. One of the things that I had no idea existed was MMBTUs, it's a measurement system that basically compiles therms, gallons, kilowatts, it's a way to kind of quantify all those sources of energy into one unit of measure in order to kind of calculate, you know, at least make it more simple to figure out how we can reduce costs through these different projects. So the one number that's highlighted is 19,245 MMBTUs, that's essentially the amount that we need to reduce within five years, and so you'll notice that table that's in, that column in blue, it should say, those are the MMBTUs that are associated with each project. You'll notice also, we have projected annual savings, we have an estimated total project cost, and the two columns in green were kind of the ones that we were supposed to work with, sat down with Paul Riccardi, Kathy Carney, the contract administrator, and Dan Morrissey of the light department, as well as Joe Collins, who I believe you've met before, from the manager's office, to kind of, we're through a game plan of what, how we would go about tackling this. So what we wanted to focus on mostly was projects that we already have money as well as materials for, and projects that we deemed, you know, most efficient, which would be LED conversion for all buildings. With these LED projects, we actually do receive funds back from our municipal light department, $15,000 per project per year, so by trying to tackle these projects early, we can accrue funds that we can go and reinvest into additional materials for future projects, so that was a big emphasis. Another aspect was try to focus on, and this is advice from our consultant through MIPC, was a lot of towns, you don't want to just pick projects sporadic, you kind of want to go low-hanging fruit, because it's, you know, it's easy to, you know, get a lot of projects done, but you also want to try to focus on building per building. So you don't want to, you know, do HVAC on one building, and then two years later get back to doing LED lighting. You kind of want to try to tackle each building at a time to get the most, you know, to make that building as efficient as possible. So that was kind of the loose thought that went to that as well. And probably the biggest thing to take away from all this is that although this is a plan, it's not written in stone, it's basically helps to give us a guideline of how to get there. So these projects, we try to have kind of an idea of how we'd want to do them, but you know, if we tackle the Callahan School in year two, and you know, maybe it works out better, we need to work on that in year three, that may have to be a change at the time. So right now, our baseline is we're working with data from FY19, so we're looking at the next five years of trying to tackle these projects, and so when something comes up, you know, there's, if you'll actually notice in the report, and I'll have to find that section for you, we do have a committee, or a committee, we have the people that are associated with facilities such as Paul Riccardi, Kathy Carney, our municipal light department, manager's office, the planning department with me and Paul Halkeotis, to revisit these projects and to see where we are. The Green Communities Initiative is, it's a lot of reporting, it's a big, it's a lot of work that goes into it, and like I mentioned before, 240 towns have already done it, we're up with 37 other towns this year, so it's really, it's the goal for, you know, most municipalities in Massachusetts is to not just do these projects for the sake of just getting a designation, but as, in terms of trying to change the way how we do building improvements in the future. We want to reduce our carbon footprint, we want to try to have more energy-efficient measures, they're all elements of building rehabilitation. So this is, if we can't get it in five years, there's no harm, no foul, if we can't follow this plan exactly, and we need to bounce around to something that's more feasible during that year, we can do that. The goal is to try to just make this a practice going forward of trying to do the most efficient measure possible when we look at building rehabilitation, so. Anyone has any questions or anything? Yep.
So as I was reviewing this 38-page plan that we got at 11:00 AM, I noticed that there's a schedule in here about which school would be tackled first, I'm curious who made that schedule.
So it was, one of the meetings we had, we sat down, like I mentioned, with Mr. Riccardi, Ms. Carney, and Mr. Morrissey from the light department, and kind of get heads together and figure out which projects or which school would be the first project to tackle. The high school was clearing away probably the best projects or the best facility to go after first. The LED lighting has already been purchased for this project, the only facet of that whole project in general is that we need to actually get the labor to install all that lighting.
No, I absolutely agree with you that the LED lighting absolutely makes sense. My concern was really about the boiler replacements that you're recommending, the Balch, the Willett, the Prescott, the Savage, I guess there's some HVAC work there, and these are major projects.
Oh, yeah.
That we can't get funding from the MSBA for this, because we would be, our priority would be looking for funding for a new middle school. So in terms of capital request from the schools, that would be a major thing that we would be asking for, so I would assume that that might delay other things on our capital improvement plan, which might be more directly related to the needs of students. And one of the things that we have in our strategic plan is that in the next couple of years, we're going to be reviewing the configuration of our elementary schools and considering our needs. It's possible that we may be considering, it's possible we could close a school, it's possible we might put an addition on a school, for example, the Prescott or the Cleveland would actually have the land, like the Balch probably, there's nothing we could do there, so it might make sense to go ahead and invest in the HVAC system there, but the Prescott school in year two, I would think we'd want to make sure we knew what we were going to do with that school before we committed to, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Absolutely, and so that's, I think one thing to touch on that is, you'll notice in your list, I don't have the Coakley included as a school with projects, that's because we're factoring into that, that within five years, either a new school is planned or a new school is constructed.
I did notice that you didn't have the Coakley, I did want to have a few comments on the executive summary at the beginning. You mentioned that we have eight school buildings, we really have nine?
Yep, I know.
You mentioned, you said that the pre-K is at the Willett Early Childhood Center, that's not true, it's here at the Savage. I don't believe that our form of government is open town meeting, I think it's representative town meeting.
Okay, so this is a draft that was done by a consultant that was given to me this morning, so we are going to review this and make corrections.
Okay, so I understand that, but I just find it a little bit frustrating that we're being asked to approve this document.
I don't expect you to approve it tonight.
No, but you expect us to approve it by our next meeting, right? That's the...
I would be actively getting you the final draft before then, with much time.
Our next meeting isn't until the 20th though, is it?
And so the designation deadline is the 22nd, so it does work out.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I have an additional, sorry, I have an additional comment, so in the same document Maya was referring to, the Town and Norwood Energy Reduction Plan, I understand what you're saying, that these are plans, the language doesn't indicate that, the language says you must do this, you must achieve 20 percent. So there's a little bit of a mismatch between the language and what you're telling us, which has me concerned, but the thing I'm mostly concerned about is the total amount of funding needed after the town's lighting incentives are applied to complete the project identified in this ERP is $6,841,121. This means an approximate investment of nearly 1.4 million each year to reach and surpass the 20 percent reduction target by fiscal year '24.
We're working on adjusting that, so our, so there's two things, we have our consultant, MIPC, that is working on us on compiling the energy reduction plan. The actual legwork was through our energy audit that was conducted by Guardian Energy Solutions. So their formula and how they factored in cost for the projects, I think it's at the absolute worst-case scenario. I think they factored in probably contingencies, and so we're working with them to try to get that estimate, just a good example of that is, they have the LED project at the high school, and they didn't factor in the fact that we do have the lighting, they had that project at $848,000. I believe Mr. Riccardi told me that they got the lighting, was it for $9,000?
We bought 300 MassSave, we bought 300 light fixtures, two-by-twos, all carb lights, for $9,000.
Yep.
We just don't have the manpower to put them in, but the offer was too good to refuse.
Absolutely.
So...
Isn't labor typically three times the cost of the actual capital to put it in?
I'm assuming, we've put in about 15 of them ourselves, there's a lot of rewiring that has to be done, but I'm assuming for a contract somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000, we could get the entire, the remainder of the 300 fixtures installed during the summer break.
Okay, so that covers one part of it, but then also in year one, you've got a heat pump, you've got the building envelope, you've got a whole bunch of other things also happening in year one.
Yep, so...
We would need to have a contingency factored in, right, if we're going to be fiscally responsible, so that 1.4 million, it's just, that's a lot of money.
And I don't think that that's the actual price that's going to be, I don't think that estimated total project cost is going to be as high as it says is, I think that's at the absolute worst-case scenario, just, there's other measures we can do to try to, other grants, not just through Green Communities, through MassSave, that we can try to reduce these project costs as opposed to just putting that all on the capital budget. So that's going to be the goal for the next five years, is to really invest on trying to both through grant funding and through the capital budget, but at the same time, I think, you know, the language is written a certain way, I can tell you just through the guidelines and talking to the actual, the representative with the DOR, there's, if we can't get it done in five years, there is no harm, there is no foul, we are just are focusing on trying to make this our goal within the next five years, and our goal moving forward for all projects to do it, dealing with renovation of our buildings, so.
So it would be helpful if the draft said that, I mean, the draft I'm reading right now says, "This energy reduction plan commits Norwood to reduce energy use in municipal facilities by at least 20 percent compared to fiscal year 2019 over five years." I hear what you're saying, and I see what I'm being asked to kind of sign off on, and there's too big of a mismatch, there's just too big of a mismatch. It would be great, could the consultant, could we get some written documentation around if we don't like that, you know, that there is no harm, no foul, or we just need, I just, from me, myself personally, I just need for the written document to match what you're saying. What you're saying sounds great, the written document gives me some cause for concern.
I think we're all absolutely in favor of being more efficient and saving environment, et cetera, you know, that's what we're about, but if you were witness to any of our meetings last season, we're talking about, you know, small dollar amounts, because every penny has to go to the education students, so when we have these vast discrepancies between 30,000 to 40,000 install lights versus 800,000, it's too general, we can't even weigh in on this, you know, we need the, everything tied up in a bow with a ribbon exact, so we can really be, make a fair judgment, so...
I think if, and it's the consultants that came out and put the plan together, when they talked about the high school, high school's nine years old, they're talking about replacing pumps to bring it up to, if you were building it today with that stuff, that's not something that we would entertain doing. So, I mean, and I think, I know, our committee last week talked about, let's concentrate on the low-hanging fruit for the first two or three years coming out of the chute, which is really electricity and lighting, and, you know, no one wants to use any of their operating money to fund this, so we're looking at a combination of what the state will give us, coming out of, at the beginning, if we get accepted, we might get $180,000, what we would get in year two, we'll save because the list of people, towns, it's growing every year, and what we would get back is incentives from the light department. I mean, I think that's where the committee's going, and that is just kind of like a roadmap, that here are the things that you can do, I've never heard that you have to do all of those things. These are the things that the consultants, when they walked around our buildings, you know, and in reality, they walked around our buildings, you know, in the school buildings, it was three or four guys, and they spent about an hour and a half, two hours in each building, so it really wasn't a deep dive into the stuff, so...
No, I understand what you're saying, the challenge is that like, if I can approve this without it affecting our budget whatsoever in any way impacting students negatively, I'm fine, I'll say, it's a great idea, fantastic, but if you're asking us to vote on specific funding for something, and we don't have exact numbers, I know five years out is hard, but if we can get like two, three years, something that actually have like, black and white what it is, how much we're spending, how much we're saving, what we're getting from the state, I think we'll all feel more comfortable.
Yeah, and I mean, these numbers, like you say, you want exact numbers, I agree, but at the same time, each project, if we are designated, we are going to review each project and see what funding we have, and what we can do that year with that funding. If we only get $180,000, we can only do $80,000 worth of projects, that's what we have to, that's what we have to work with. So like I said, this is a guideline to get there, if we can't get there...
So, so I understand, this is a list of things that we could be doing with the funding we're going to get from the state, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and what we should be doing.
Okay, it's not like we have to spend this money to get money from the state.
It's not like we have to spend the $180,000 to get the money from the state.
No, no, this list of projects, okay, I'm imagining to get approved, we have to, these are just projects we can put together that are potential projects, you don't have to do them, is what you're saying.
No, yeah, so there is wiggle room to knock off a few projects, and that, I think we would do that based upon looking at the MMBTUs... I think we would do that based upon looking at the MMBTUs and trying, so, 19,245 is the amount of MMBTUs with these projects. We only have to reduce our MMBTUs by about, I think it's 19,021. So, we have about 244, I guess, MMBTUs to work with. So, so projects that are, you know, maybe low on MMBTUs but high on price, maybe we don't do those for that reason. So, there's some wiggle room, but, you know, I, it's, it's...
But you're talking about 95% of the projects to get to this number.
Yeah, and so, some of the projects, though, I would imagine would be, if you look at the cost, I mean, that's just general, you know, building upkeep in terms of like, you know, doing like a building envelope or armor for the HVAC, so that's general wear and tear that I would imagine would be factored in normally. I mean, would you say so?
Yeah.
I'm not expert in this field, so it's hard for me to understand this from some very small print, but I appreciate what you're trying to do. You know, I just, I wish there was a clear cut, how much we're going to spend, how much we're going to save, what the state's going to contribute. That's all I'm asking.
So, I do have that, because it's on there. And so, for school projects in general, we're looking at over 15,973 MMBTUs with an average annual savings of $352,333 a year.
Which, yeah, where you're referring to.
So, I did, I wrote the math down, so I'm sorry. It's not, it's factoring in the annual project costs. So, for all the school projects, if we're just looking at Balch, Prescott, Callahan, Cleveland, Willett, Oldham, Nord High and Savage Center, so, though, the bulk of our, our energy reduction would come from school projects. If we have to reduce it by 19,000, over almost 16,000 is from school improvements in general. If completed, you're looking at around $352,000 in savings annually. If you just focus on the LED projects, that's about 3,166 MMBTUs saved, and your annual savings is around $125,000 a year in electric costs. So, if you just factor, factor in trying to work on those LED projects initially, you can, you know, you're saving, you know, $125,000.
See, now I think we're making progress. Telling me how much we're saving, why, this, this makes help. Now, how much we have to spend to get to save, this is my question.
Yeah, so that's, like I said, that, that project cost, in my opinion, I think is inflated. I, I think that's factoring in contingencies in the worst-case scenario, just because, you know, looking at the, the school LED project in general, I mean, that's, they, they thought it would be $848,000, and we're probably going to do it for less than 40,000. I mean, it's, it is, I know, I understand the concern, why you want them a little bit more shored up, but I think our consultant that did the energy audit was trying to give us like, the absolute worst-case scenario. I think when we go to review those projects for the year, the fiscal year that it comes in, we're probably going to give those numbers more shored up, but for the sake of completing the plan and getting the audit done in time, that they, in timeframe that they had to work with, that's the number that we're working with.
Mara? So, I, thank you for coming before us. I have just a lot of really basic questions, because this 38-page document came to us at 11:00, and I work all day, so I didn't know it existed until I walked to my seat today, so, the money for those projects comes from the state, yes?
Yes, so, money from the projects come through the Green Community Grants that we can, that we have to apply for, for the state.
So, what exactly, just because I'm trying to play catch-up here.
Yep.
What exactly would the school department or the town be responsible for in terms of payment?
Um, you're not really responsible for anything. I think it's, it's, some projects are more or less more updating of buildings.
Okay.
That are just kind of common, which you would do typically without having to go through the, becoming a Green Community.
Okay.
So, there's no requirement from the town that they have to invest their own money from the budget on a project.
Okay, so the 1.4 million per year comes from where?
That's an inflated number, I think, from the...
But pretend like, okay, so like 200,000 is the uninflated number.
Yep.
I'm just pulling something out of, like, there.
Sure.
Where does that money come from?
Uh, I guess we would have to apply for additional grants.
That's, that's just the thing that I sort of feel like we were talking about, and I, it's like I said, I hadn't had a chance to look at it, I wanted to make sure I was clear on. So, regardless, that money isn't coming out of our operating budget or the town's operating budget. That's purely from the state.
Not unless, not unless we feel that that's a worthwhile project to do. So, so if, say if it's a building envelope and it's only $5,000, and it's just part of general updating of the building, maybe that's just a project that's included in the budget. I, I can't speak for the future, I'm just saying, we don't have to take money from the budget immediately and go to, it's not tied up.
But as, as the plan is right now, are you intending that money will be taken out of the budget for this?
We were advised to just write down a base, so that's the second column, where I have budget item, Green Community Grant.
Uh-huh.
I can't stress more how that's just rough, rough, kind of rationale behind it. So, and that was how we were advised from our, from our consultant.
Right.
You can't really predict the future. I can't tell you something is definitely going to be a budget item, or something is definitely going to be a grant.
Right, no, I understand that. Like, it would be helpful for me, just, because I can only speak for myself, if you went through this and actually said what these would actually cost, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, well, I don't want, like, I'm, I'm not going to say, well, you said it was 3,000 and now it's 4,000. Like, I'm not going to be, but like, you're saying that it's inflated. I'd like to know, other than the LED lights, like, where is it inflated? Like, what really are we going to be asked to do?
So, so that's something, like I said, this project is on the fly, because we've been dealing with it probably for less than a month with our consultant to actually work on it, so, I did reach out to get that breakdown.
I think what you're hearing from us is the on-the-fly thing is what's making us nervous. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And like, I'm not saying that that's your fault, but I, I suspect that what's kind of happening is, as you said, it is on the fly, and something that I think, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I would be very, very willing to support, but the fact that I feel like I'm getting it second-hand, not second-hand, but I'm getting it very late, and I'm having trouble following it, and you're even saying that it's on the fly, I, I just, I worry that I'm going to put my vote to agree to something that then, once I realize the fine print of, I'm like, maybe I, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so, let me just clarify what I mean by on the fly. I meant that if I had another week, I probably would get you a final draft. I, I, I'm trying to work with your schedule to meet with you, so, I have the 4th and the 20th to work with, I wanted to meet with you on the 4th, because I didn't assume I'd get a vote on the first night. So, this is the earliest possible draft I could get you.
I under, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not meaning to, I'm not meaning to say it's your fault, I'm just saying that I think that's what you're hearing, is that we, we're reacting to that. The Savage Center, year three.
Yep.
It would also be really helpful if this had page numbers.
Yeah.
Because it's like all 19, and then 21, and then 60. And then, I, before we get to the, the, also, I don't know how to phrase it, because it's like, fourth page 19. Executive Summary two, right after the Summary of Municipal Energy Uses, there's just a random table put in the middle of the page, making it impossible to read the text on the table or the text on the page.
Yeah.
So, if that could be addressed, so we can know what we're reading before we're asked to vote on it. The Savage Center, year three, am I wrong that that's a possible site for the new middle school?
It was mentioned in the AI three report.
Right, and don't we have to...
It's something that should be discussed during the full feasibility study.
Right.
We haven't discussed it yet.
Right, but I'm just nervous about us having that.
Yes.
Just for the same reason the Coakley isn't there.
Yep.
If that's one of the possible sites that's being investigated, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense for, to be counting on that for how we get to the green initiative.
Can I go back to the question about what funding is available from the state? And I completely understand that we don't have full prices for these things, and I get that, and I don't have a problem with that, actually. It was my understanding that these were, some of these would be capital projects that we would be asking town meeting to fund as a capital project, and we could potentially get some reimbursement from the state. Is that accurate?
I believe that is accurate for some. So, there are incentives that are missing on here, and that was another issue, which was for, for heating projects. So, you'll notice, if you look at the estimated utility incentives, you have a few number, usually you'll see $15,000 associated with an LED project, that's reimbursed from our light department. There's usually incentives that also go with heating projects as well that are reimbursed. So, that's another issue today that we've been, we're trying to get squared away with our consultant, so I would imagine there would be reimbursement.
Okay, but I guess, when we get green and, if we were to finish this and get the green designation from the state.
Mm-hmm.
What specifically?
So, if we finish this, apply and get green designation, basically, the deadline has moved back, because like I said, they, we actually got, not only did we get our consultant late, the D O E R actually moved the deadline back, because they realized that they took forever to get the, the grant funding out. So, when we apply on the 22nd, hopefully by early 2020, we find out that we've received designation, and then they pretty much give you about a month and a half, two months, to figure out what you're going to do with your awarded funding. We've been told it's going to be $180,000.
So, okay, so that's, we could potentially get $180,000.
Yes.
Right, but this plan, and I understand some of these numbers are inflated, but this plan is calling out 1.4 million dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
So, I assume that the, whatever the difference is, would be capital money that we'd be looking for from town meeting, that we'd either borrow for, or we would have free cash, or something like that.
Potentially, or we would try to go a different route and apply for additional grants. I, I, I know it's not in the plan, and I will talk to our consultant about it, but there's, there's no one holding us to the fire, that we have to come up 1.4 million dollars each year to get this done within five years, and that's something I will talk to our consultant, because the D O E R has told us this, so I will make sure that's written into the actual document that you can, so I'm, so I'm not just saying it, and it sounds nice. So, that is one thing I just want to emphasize, that I, we shouldn't be doing projects if it's hindering your actual budget to do what's best for the schools. That's not the goal at all. The goal is to try to do these projects to renovate the building, to actually save money that can go back to more worthwhile endeavors, as opposed to paying your electric bill. So, if we, I guess what I'm saying is, although some of these projects might seem higher, maybe that actual inflated cost will maybe be reduced in half, I don't imagine we're going to try to take money to get it done at the expense of the actual, of your actual budget, is what I'm saying. So, I, that's, that is what I just wanted to show you.
Right, that was actually what I understood, but then, when I heard you answer a different question, I thought you were saying that this whole thing could be paid for by the state, but that's not.
Not the whole thing. I mean, it's, it's very unlikely, the whole thing. I mean, that'd be a ton of money.
So, the, I'm looking at our capital improvement plan that the school committee had, had approved last year, and, and we had for FY '22, we were going to look for Oldham and Balch repla, boiler replacements there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious why, so the Balch, you actually have listed as, that boiler replacement as a year one project, but then Oldham became year four. I just...
Yeah, so, sat down and one...
Feel like, you know, we approved this, this is what we had told everybody we wanted, and then it doesn't, that doesn't seem to have factored into this.
I'm up to change, so if that's the, the actual case, if you could send that to me, and I can change that. So, this is basically, we went through a meeting and determined which projects were, were the most worthwhile to go into, and the focus was on LED, the focus was on the high school first, and then from there, we tried to, it was basically me looking at it and trying to figure out how I could split it within five years, so I'm not aware of that.
That's where I think I'm feeling a little uncomfortable, that, that that's really our role, to make those decisions?
That's why I said it's, it's more of a guideline to get there than it actually is something written in stone, so...
And in fairness, Maya, I think what the consultant was trying to do is, National Grid gives potentially a lot of incentives, so our boilers at the Balch, everywhere except the Balch actually, are all natural gas. So, they wanted to give the town the best opportunity to try to get some grant money from a national grid. And all, all we get, unlike, we don't get any electrical money from National Grid, because we have our own power plant, our own electrical company, and we, and they do $15,000 a year. And I think the committee, correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, really decided the other day that we should go, if we're going to do this, we should be going full steam ahead on lighting.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
That's the big bang for a buck. And the problem with the lighting quotes is, I think they assumed that every fixture would be replaced by a, a new LED fixture, and that you don't have to do that with every fixture. Some fix, excuse me, some fixtures, you can just change the bulb, take the ballast out, change and put in an LED bulb. So, I think that's potentially what's escalated their electrical costs, because they want all-new LED, and that, it's big money. So, I think, you know, the committee said, you know, we're going to try like hell to save as much energy as we can using the electric light as our way to do that, and, and I think the state's perspective, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick.
Yep.
You know, they guarantee you the first, when you get accepted, they guarantee you a base amount of money, $180,000. Every year after that, it's, you know, depending on how much money they have.
Sure.
And how much they have now to divide up between the 300-odd towns that are in it. So, you know, I think they're looking for a commitment that we will try to get as green as we possibly can. I don't, I, I haven't heard from anybody that their expectation is that you get there by funding this out of your regular appropriation, your building maintenance appropriations, or even your capital. And, you know, our capital overlay plan, it moves every year.
Absolutely.
But those, some of those things move up to Priority Two, and then they'll move back down to Priority Three, and you'll see when we do this year's plan, that there'll be some new stuff in there, and some other things will get bumped down. So, yes, it's, seems like it's all over the place, but it's just, I, I believe, and it should be in writing, and I agree, that it's a commitment to move ahead and try to reduce the carbon footprint of Massachusetts by having the municipal buildings partake in it. And that's the bottom line, and I don't, I don't expect that, you correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, that the town's going to get anywhere near $180,000 to get covered from the state, because they're adding, how many more towns potentially this year?
Well, one out of 37, so 37.
And there's already 200.
Forty.
Forty. So, now it's going to be up over 300, I mean, you know, the pot of gold is not that big, you know, let's start digging now.
Yeah.
Okay. Because we did this with the National Grid, the last district I was in, so I'm not sure if this is, because when we did it there, it was, we did all the, the lighting fixtures and lights, because what they, what they do with National Grid is, you not only got the incentive for that, but they also gave you like interest-free loans that would be attached to your, your bill. So, I don't know if it's a small amount that you might get just for the lighting fixtures, is, that's what it's possible?
No, because we have a town lighting department, and it's not obviously as big as National Grid, those incentives are not, we won't get them on the electrical side of those. We'll get $15,000 per project from the, from the light department. Where we could get some money for National Grid is on the boilers, because they're all gas-fired, except the Balch, and it's only when we get into it will we really understand what the potential incentive for National Grid is. incentive for National Grid is. And, but I agree, we are in flux on what, what we're going to look like in three years from now, in seven years from now. We don't know. But that's, I think, part of the confusion that you're having, I look at as the beauty of the plan, because nothing is in concrete. It's just a roadmap. And you can choose to follow it, or go in another direction with other projects. But they have to at least have something on paper to submit.
Yes.
To be clear-
That's the best way of-
I'm perfectly comfortable with a list of like possible projects. Where I'm struggling is that it seems that, you know, there's, somebody has decided year one, year two, year three, and I feel like we should have had a role in that decision.
I agree. And so that, that's maybe my, just, I guess naive, I didn't really, you know, took what we took from the meeting and I worked on the list. But, I mean, if that's something that you guys have and I can incorporate, I'd be more than willing to, you know, I'd want to do that, so.
So my question is, what does this proposal become a green community, or require us to do as a school committee to approve? I mean, are we going to, I mean, I could probably craft a motion to say, in principle, we approve of going for a green community, we approve in principle of these projects, provided we don't cede any control of our budget, or be forced to make any decisions that negatively affect our budget. Is that, if we vote on that and leave it at that, is that good enough for the proposal?
Yeah, so it was, it was pretty much a very simple prompt they gave me in terms of what, basically that the school district votes to endorse the energy reduction plan. So-
Devils in the details.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, look, we're all in favor of energy reduction, but I don't think we want to, you know, have any, we don't want to, we can't give up control of this budget, it just doesn't work that way. So if we get that in writing, I mean, that like, these things are proposed, possible, you know, we're all in favor of it, but it has to be feasible and make sense and not negatively affect our budget, then I could, then I could vote without knowing the exact-
I, I think that's pretty, I mean, that's fair. I mean, in terms of, you don't want to have these projects impact your budget. And like Paul said, it's a roadmap. If we take, if we're going down the road and we want to take a left and go check out the attraction on the side road, that's a whole, that's, that's, that's part of, I like says, part of the beauty of doing this. We want to work on implementing these projects, but we don't want to negatively, negatively impact anyone's budget and our ability to do what's best for facilities or for the schools in general, so.
I feel like what people are telling you verbally is not what we're reading, is another example. Unfortunately, this isn't on you.
Yep.
But the document that you gave us on the guideline that we should have, on page nine, appendix A, there's sample letters, and it very specifically says that you cannot use the verbs endorse or support, that you have to use the verbs approve, commit it, or adopt. So the verbiage that's in front of us is please be advised that the school district adopts, or approves, or commits the energy reduction plan. So that's the language that it's saying here, that we-
Yeah, well, that's what I said first, and I also thought-
Yeah, no, I'm just saying it says, there just seems to be different things. And Dave asked, like, how would we craft it? And I believe we have to have a motion that pretty much says this, so that then it can go on a letter signed by Dr. Thompson and myself. Yeah, Joe?
So I think we all agree that what's written is not what, is not what you, what is really kind of happening. So I'd like to make a motion to, can I make a motion to request something from Patrick?
Well, I was going to actually ask if maybe we-
Because I've got the themes.
Yeah, because we're running out of time, obviously.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And our November 20th meeting, if we really packed with other things that I cannot move any further, and it was impossible unless they get us here tonight, we're not going to get another meeting on the calendar. So I think we should kind of come up with a timeline, like, what are we as a committee looking for, and by when, so that hopefully when we reconvene on November 20th, we can be productive and efficient for all of us.
So the themes that I heard, what I would love to see, like, in an executive summary, like, it doesn't have to be, but it sounds like we're confused about the evidence, we would like to see written evidence of the non-binding nature of it. So you guys are telling us we don't have to do that.
Yep.
An explanation of where the grant money comes from and how, because that was a point of confusion for us. We'd like to see alignment with the school committee capital-
Improvement plan.
Improvement plan. We would like to see numbers that you are comfortable with, that you don't say are inflated. And we'd like for the list of projects to include or reflect the potential site flux with everything we've got going on with-
Middle school.
Thank you. With the middle school, and then also with the fact that we may be doing redistricting as part of the Cokeley Plan.
Did you write that down?
I did.
Okay, I'll copy that later.
Actually, this will go on replay, so you can watch it. So don't worry.
You can get them out. Is there anything else that anybody would add to Joe's list that we need?
Just for, you know, I understand wattage, this, this MMB to you saves, I get it.
Yep.
But I mean, I'd love to see that translated in dollars, you know, real simple, I'm a simple person, want to see a simple explanation of, this is how much it's going to cost us, and this is how much it's going to save, and this is, you know, basically, in dollars, so that I can get a, just, you know, it doesn't have to be every single one, just a couple examples.
It does have annual project cost per project.
Right.
So that's how much you're saving per year.
Estimate annual utility incentives, estimate utility incentives, diesel savings.
Yeah, I projected annual-
I didn't project it on nine and a half, twenty-four.
Oh, so it's missing off our page, which is-
No, it's there.
It's there, it's just harder to read.
It's there, it's just very small.
Oh, it's very tiny here. Got it. Okay. So, yeah, maybe just pull out a couple examples of this, just to highlight, you know, like, something that we can see at home.
Yeah.
You know, because definitely, we can't zoom in close enough to see this micro print, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And I'll be clear, that, that the evidence of the non-binding nature, you don't have to have something directly from the state. If you can just show a letter from another town, or show us another town that had a plan that didn't match it, really anything, as long as it's written.
I completely agree. And that's, you know, just an element, I mean, that's more of a result of the fact that I got the plan today, incentive today, and haven't had enough time to review it thoroughly, so that's-
So we meet again on the 20th.
Yep.
And the practice that we're trying to have followed is that we have any material the Friday before, so that would be the 15th, but-
But, I was going to say, capital B, because you're going to need it sooner, because the questions are going to have to go back to Patrick.
And you're, and you're ready.
And back and forth between them, because they need, honestly, with the agenda we have on the 20th, the questions need to be answered before we walk in the room.
Absolutely.
So what is the earliest?
Probably, so this week, we're reviewing it completely, working with our consultant, hopefully get information back from the guy, both the company that did our audit. So 15th is, so I could probably, 12th or 13th, I mean, that's conservatively, I mean, I'd like to get it for the, I'd like to get something done by the end of the week, but if it's a holiday, it's probably have to be 12th or 13th.
So you're in DC.
On the 15th.
Really, you're forward at that?
Yes.
The 14th to 15th?
Right.
What is your ability to forward us what we need? And then funnel questions back to Patrick.
We'll have to figure that out. But first, let's get the, I mean, if we could get, if we could get the, get it on the 12th, that would probably be, be best. And we'll figure the rest out, we think, on that one.
So, just, I want to clarify my point about the capital improvement plan.
Yep.
I, you know, that is something we have approved, but as Mr. Ricardi said, it is something that changes. And if there are things that, like, you know, we have two boilers being replaced in one year, but if it turns out that the way National Grid reimbursements work, we can only get reimbursed for one a year, and that's the reason why they were separated, like, that's fine, but it's just kind of a question of, what was, when this plan was adjusted, what was the rationale for that? That's what, because we approved this, we need to know why we're being asked to approve something different.
Yeah, I think that, that's, that's an element of your assistant town planner, working on it and not knowing enough about what you guys did in terms of the capital plan. So I put that together. It obviously should change based upon what you voted. So that's just my own naivety, I guess.
Any further questions or discussions, Nate?
If you wake up tomorrow morning and think you want another one, I'll, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you for taking your questions.
Thank you.
Patrick, do you have a second?
Got a souvenir too.
Thank you.
Dr. Thompson, any other report?
Yes, a few things. Will remind the committee that at their seat, our, our November 1st enrollment numbers, you can see that we added 13 students at the elementary level. We lost 18 students at the middle school. Part of that is the settling out of people finally getting their paperwork in to withdraw and such. And the high school lost five students. So system-wide, it's a delta or a change of 10 students from 9-9-19, and that goes back to before October 1, those numbers. But our, our numbers now enrolled is 3,513 students throughout the district. And you can see on the second page the classroom numbers as well. Next thing is, I want to, and I did tell the committee about this last week, but all of our submittals to the MSBA for the proposed Cokeley Middle School project are in, well ahead of schedule, and we look forward to hearing from them, fingers crossed for a December date to hear about our, being able to move into feasibility stage, so I will keep you informed of that. The Norwood, Charwell's Food Service, Norwood High School, we are hosting a Thanksgiving dinner, community Thanksgiving dinner, on the 25th of November. There are blackboard connects that have gone out. We are trying to get our SVPs, it's very hard to plan a dinner if you don't know how many are coming. So if there are people who are interested, please look for that. The 25th is the Monday before Thanksgiving, starting at 5:30. And it looks like it's going to be a fantastic event, so we look forward to that, so please look for those. Strategic plan, my presentation for the strategic plan is part of our action plan for the strategic plan. I'm trying to schedule that for the 18th of November, that is a Monday evening. Time and exact place, we're still working on figuring out where's the best place to do that. And the first coffee with the superintendent, I'm scheduling for the 20th, which is the Wednesday at 10:00 AM here at the Savage Center. So if you have time, want to come and have a coffee and just some informal conversation, would love to get the opportunity to do that. And that is my report, Madam Chair.
Just two questions. On the enrollment numbers, Dr. Thompson, on the per, the ones per classroom, I just wasn't clear-
I'm sorry, the one, I'm sorry, the one where?
The ones where it breaks down the numbers per classroom?
Yep.
Where there's a positive or a negative, is the total number in that class reflected of that? So like, look at-
Yes.
So it's, it was 14, and now it's 13, and Barris, and she's down one. Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And then just another question I had regarding the holiday, the Thanksgiving meal that Charwell's has offered, I think it's a fantastic idea. Just to be clear, who, who's paying for it?
That is free.
Right, but who's paying for it? Like, the custodial-
You always ask the tough questions.
Well, you know-
It just came up yesterday, or Friday, while I was away. But they, they, I believe it is through the same grant process that they-
That's what I was trying to figure out.
That they used this summer, but I am guessing on that.
Okay.
But, but between that and perhaps some corporate giving-
Okay.
Along that line, but it will be free to families.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, Dr. Thompson? No. So moving right along to budget, Ms. Sheridan, we are resuming the conversation with you again around the camera requests for van buses.
Okay. So to reiterate what we've talked about with the cameras, the current bus contractor has offered to buy the cameras for the 13 regular ed buses. The cost would be spread over the three years, so it's $17,615 for the 13 buses, cost per year $5,871.67. Other recommendation for the special education van and small bus cameras, we changed that. The transportation director recommends adding cameras to 16 of the special education vehicles at this time. He's got three, five vans that are 2013, three 2015, one 2016, one 2017, one 2019, for a total of 11 of the small vans. And then he's got five 2017 small buses. The cost for that would be $1,000 estimate per camera. He did get three quotes. That's about $16,000. I spoke to Al, the director, and he indicated that he eventually would like to have a camera on all the vehicles. And the reason for this is for incident reviews, verification, and investigation. He feels we're on borrowed time on this topic. The total cost for FY20 with the, if you did the regular ed buses, as well as the sped vehicles, would be $21,871.67. In fiscal year '21, it will be $5,871.67. And again, in fiscal year '22, $5,871.67. We recommend that whenever we buy a new sped vehicle, that we would add cameras at that time, we'd go out to inspect the vans. Recommend to use the school revolving bus funds. The current figures as of 10/31/19, the beginning balance was 321, 361. The revenue, 205, 610. They've only used about 566 in expenses, have covered $190,148. That's the portion of the bus contract that we're putting to the revolving, which will leave you at this time with an ending balance of 336, 256.
Just to be clear, if we do spend the $21,871.16, that would put cameras on every bus that we have?
The 13 buses, we have, with the 16, we're only currently using 13.
Three-year spares.
Right, no, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to just wrap my head around something, because I understand that it's 13, we'd put 13 bus, cameras on the 13 buses from Conley. I'm with you there. My question is more about the sped van and small bus cameras, because you said that if we do all six, if we do 16, and I think we have 16, it would be 16,000, but then you just made a comment a second ago that Al recommends that eventually we put them on all. So I'm just trying to figure out where's the all that we're not putting them on right now?
We're trying to see how many of the vans would still be on the road within the next three years.
Okay.
So that's where we came up with these. There are some, I did give you a list of all his vans. The one that he did not put them on was a 2009 year van.
Okay.
So-
And how many of those are there? I just didn't see that on the page.
See those, two, three.
I think it's nine.
Nine.
Oh, I see it's on the last page.
Yeah, nine.
There's nine.
Are those vans currently in use? I know sometimes we had some that seemed to be parked here more often than-
I believe they're all in use. There was only one that, let's see, there's only this one, van 14, but that one's not there. They're all in use, but we were just figuring with the recommendation that they had to still be on the road for three years.
Yeah.
So I mean, we can change that if you'd like, but that's what we were figuring on, that the vans that would still be on the road in three years.
So one of the questions we had had at our last meeting was, are these cameras something that can be easily removed if we do, if we put one on the 2009 vehicle, we buy a new vehicle, can we just swap that camera into the new vehicle?
I'm not sure on that, but I, I don't think it's as easy as, as just swapping it, because they have to be installed.
Right.
Because it's, the $1,000 included purchasing the camera as well as installation.
Right.
So I could get further detail, but I don't think it's as easy as moving the camera over to the next year.
No, I wouldn't think so. I just, if we bought a camera, and then a year later, I would imagine it wouldn't be another $1,000.
Oh, I think you could take it out. No, it wouldn't be another $1,000.
Yeah, because I mean, I guess my point is that if we're spending this money, and then we're still going to have nine vehicles, I mean, I take the point that they may not be on the road in three years, but if we're going to spend this money, and then law of averages says the one that we're going to have one of the camera on is going to be one of the nine that we don't have the camera on. So then it seems to me that that's money that's, like, I would rather just, if we have $336,000 in there, I'd rather just spend the money and put them on all of them, so then we're not worrying about it.
I'm sure Al would like that. I mean, if that was his recommendation of school committee, then I'm sure that he would like that.
Yeah.
But we were with the understanding that you, we thought that the school committee only wanted on a van that would, three years, would be on the road still.
Right, and I mean, I don't want to-
But we can change this.
Yeah. I don't want to speak for the rest of my, the committee, but to me, it seems, if I'm going to spend $21,871, it makes no sense not to spend a couple of extra $1,000 to make sure we're actually covered.
Right. I mean, he does, I mean, that was one of the recommendations. When we first came in, when he had his presentation, it was more like a wish list for him.
Yeah.
And now it's become, you know, a topic that I think everybody feels is a good idea. So, I mean, if you would like us to, you know, get the estimates to do all of them, I mean, he has gotten the three quotes. So that $1,000, he feels, with the three quotes he has, it came out just a little less than three, a thousand dollars a camera.
So if it's, so even to say it's, it's $1,000 a camera, so to put them on the other vans, it would be an additional $9,000.
Right.
So that would put this to just a little over $30,000.
Right.
Okay.
Which could all be covered by the revolving account.
Right, yeah.
All of it could be.
That we can only use on transportation.
Right.
Right.
So, I'll make a-
I was going to say so.
I was going to make a, I was going to make a motion to approve this amount, plus the additional approximately $9,000, so that we put cameras on every vehicle.
And I would second that, I would just say that I know Al's really good, Al Wright.
Yep.
I'm sure he's going to negotiate that price a little bit down, so I second the motion.
I mean, he did show me the three quotes, so, I mean, I feel pretty confident with his figure.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
It's not the first time we've ever given a call.
Now, we have a budget subcommittee update. Maya, do you want to share? Everybody, what you're doing?
So Teresa and I have met a few times with Dr. Thompson and Ms. Sheridan, and we've had some participation from FinCom as well in our meetings. So you have minutes here from our two previous meetings, although I have not yet done the minutes from last week.
Right.
Right. So there's, the- So there's, the biggest thing is that the strategic plan calls out some responsibilities for the school committee, which kind of fall to the budget subcommittee about looking at salary comparisons, looking at ways to improve our budget process. We've been talking a lot with Ms. Sheridan about other, her budget processes that she's done before. So one of the goals of the budget subcommittee will be to come to you with a potential timeline and sort of a plan for the budget for this year, and we hope to have that conversation sometime in December. I think the, and then Teresa and I will both be attending the MAS C conference this week, and we intend to go to some sessions about things like budget transparency and
there's stuff on the revolving funds, the student accounts, lots of different budgets, there's a number of contract sessions, there's some on evaluation, so there's, the contract process will be there as well. So between the three of us, I think we can cover a number of the sessions.
Thank you.
All right. Short speech. Back on top of the other one here.
I was going to say we'll catch up.
So under new business, we already took care of the field trip, so next is the superintendent letter of intent. So everybody should have in your packet a letter that Dr. Thompson sent us actually back on October 17th. I'll just read it so the community is aware of what we are discussing. Dear committee, I am writing to inform the committee of my intention to request negotiations of a contract extension as superintendent of the North Public Schools. As you know, my current contract expires June 30th, 2020. The past two and a half years have been, one, existential growth in our school system. Specifically, we have successfully secured an override that will offer financial stability to the district. I facilitated the development and implementation of a brand new strategic plan, established a focus on instructional practice and assessment, and hired and developed a highly functional administrative team. I very much appreciate the opportunity to continue leading the district and the work of realizing the strategic plan and the continued improvement of the district. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Thompson. So I checked in with Dorothy Presser at MAS C just to make sure I was guiding us through this process correctly. And she did say that it does need to be discussed in open session initially. So in Dr. Thompson's contract, it says, I believe, that we let him know by January, but we are able to do that sooner if we would like. But we do have to decide in open session, since as Dorothy said, this is in essence a discussion of his professional competence, if we do want to enter into negotiations for a successor contract or not. So we have the letter, we have the advice of Dorothy.
So I'd like to make a motion to enter into negotiations for a contract extension with Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second, I do. Discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. So what we have to discern, and we can start discussion now or it could wait, but we do need to determine how we want to proceed in terms of, do we want to negotiate with Dr. Thompson, the full committee in executive session every time? Do we want to determine two people who are going to be negotiating with him? Or the third option is to have the chair do the negotiations. Obviously, no matter which one we choose, it always comes back to the full committee in executive session.
Is there anything from the MAS C conference you can take away to bring back?
There is a session on contracting with your superintendent.
Maybe, maybe we wait till the report comes back on best practices and then we go from there.
Sure, and a reminder, we do have the contract session with Dorothy scheduled later in the month as well, where this could also be a topic we get more guidance on.
I just, we, how many contract negotiations do we have this year?
A lot.
Five.
Five union negotiations.
Five unions.
Negotiations plus Dr. Thompson. So while I appreciate the guidance that mass, that the conference will give us, we are a small school committee with five, and we have, we almost have one negotiation, we have more negotiations than we have school committee members.
Yes, and we should have at least two on each contract.
So I would like, I would like to make a motion that, to recommend that we have two school committee members, two school, that option that you had, two school committee members who negotiate with Dr. Thompson in executive session and then bring it back to the rest of the committee.
Right, okay, so they could meet like separately with Dr. Thompson, and then it would be brought back to the full committee in executive session.
Correct.
My question to the committee, knowing how hard it is to get together, and just personally knowing how many meetings I already have on my calendar between the different subcommittees and task force and everything, and the fact that we do get together a couple times a month and we go into executive session, is that the most effective, or is it the most effective to do it as all five of us with Dr. Thompson in executive session?
Well, speaking as somebody who's just in a negotiation, Doc Thompson has been the guiding force on what the school district needs versus what the union required. Now, it's a little different where somebody I've been working with, I'm negotiating, not against, together with, but so I don't think that I'd be experienced enough to know what we're looking for. I almost think we should all get together in executive session and discuss what the contract before we point two people to go and discuss with Dr. Thompson what his needs are.
So I think we, yeah, we should start a conversation in executive session with just a, and I know that you've already gotten some feedback from our attorney about specific language in the contract. I, because this school committee has turned over so much, I'm the only member of the committee who was involved in the last negotiation with Dr. Thompson.
I didn't realize when I was looking at the contract.
And I think it might be helpful for me to make sure the rest of you are up to speed on that process.
Sure.
And so we should maybe, so I guess maybe when I'm volunteering to take the lead, I'm like, I'll put together a few things that I think everybody should know, and you guys all have the contract anyway, so you can review, and then we can discuss in executive session.
Is that feasible for the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then we can talk details about like how to move forward from there.
Okay, and then by then, we'll also have been at the conference, I can go back to the attorney, so we'll have much more information.
Cool.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
All right.
Can you take your letter back now?
Nope.
All right, wonderful. So moving on, Dr. Wyeth, you're up with an update on the ELA pilot.
Yeah, good evening. In your packet, you've got a sort of a, I guess, three sheets that sort of give you an update on our last update, which was about, I guess, maybe three, four weeks ago. So you have our timeline here and the process again. So really, all it's kind of new information for you, I think, are the dates coming up and what's been done, and then some updates in terms of feedback from some teachers and kind of where we are. So I just want to point out the date. So October 29th, we had a really good session with all of our pilot teachers here, looking at the reading components of each of the programs. And those were divided up into grade level groups, so we had, you know, different programs represented at each grade level, talking about the pros and the cons as they saw it of their, their piloted program. Notes were taken, questions were asked, clarifying questions, probing questions, and all of that was facilitated by our principals and our reading teachers. So it was very well-run, and my hat's off to, you know, Stephanie West for organizing that in a really efficient way. And November 12th is the next meeting we'll have. The reading specialists will be sort of looking very closely at the assessment components of all of these programs and trying to just to, so again, look at the pros and the cons and discern which of the three have the strongest assessment components to them. And November 14th and 15th, we've got a team, it'll be going to the DESE and participating in their Quality Curriculum Materials Network. So they'll get a lot of good information from that process. It's a statewide kind of network, and they've developed a system for curating curriculum. It's very new at the state level, and so that's, as that evolves, we'll be participating in it and gathering information that can help us actually make determination of which of our three pilots will be the best. So they will provide a rubric that they use, have been using, and again, these tools are all being refined a little bit. But we'll come back with, you know, the team will come back with these rubrics that we can use to assess our own programs. So it should be a very helpful kind of workshop there on the 14th and 15th for our team. On the 19th, comparable to what we did on the 29th, they'll look at the writing components of all three programs and sort of have a, again, a pro/con discussion, collect the information. All of this Stephanie is collecting in Google Docs, and people continue to contribute to the, to the, you know, to those documents as they experience the pilot more deeply. But November 19th, we'll focus on writing, and then, you know, not too far after that, about a month or so after that, the pilot teachers are due to review the, with the DESE tools in hand and the data that they've collected and make a decision on sort of which pilot, which of the pilots would be best for us to adopt. So that's sort of the, you know, the broad sketch, kind of where we've been, where we're going. And then the other sheet you have in front of you are just some bullets that Stephanie had collected from the experience on the 29th and earlier, and I'd be happy to take any questions. And as we sort of move forward, probably in late November, after the writing process, it'd be another time for me to come back and kind of give you an update, I think would make sense, prior to the big final date of December 10th. But any, any questions about the process so far? Yep?
Yeah, how long is a pilot process usually?
Usually, I mean, the, the ideal pilot process is about a year.
So why are we doing it in three, two, not even three full months?
Yeah, this, it's because of the crunch for the, of the override. I think Dr. Thompson has explained that pretty.
Why is there a crunch for the override?
Well, this was part of the override request, was that we would have a new program in place for this coming year.
But why can't we just purchase it and, at the end of the year? I mean, it's not like January 1st happens, and if we haven't purchased it, the money goes away and we're all big liars. Why don't we pilot it properly?
Well, I guess it's a matter of opinion. I, personally, when I was assistant superintendent, we would pilot for three or four months.
Okay.
Usually, a cycle is a year.
Yeah.
We're over that. You know, and again, it is, you know, it is a, you know, it's a large district, you know, it's something that has not been done in a long period of time. But the selection process, I think, took a little longer than we originally anticipated it taking. So, but I piloted many three or four different programs when I was assistant superintendent in three or four months, so.
Right, I just, I, to me, it is, I mean, I don't know how you could really know if something works, and, I mean, you're, you're basically saying that, I just, I highlighted something that you said, Dr. Wyeth, of experience the pilot more deeply with making your final recommendation by December 10th. I don't know how you could really have experienced anything deeply. We started in September. I mean, just personally, and if the entire purpose is everything I've seen up there in terms of MCAS scores is we need to really get writing right, why don't we spend the time to make sure we get it right?
So I think the ELA committee probably is like jumping up and down and sharing you right now if they're watching this.
Yeah, I mean, this has been a tension, I'll be, I'll be realized, it's been a tension all along, the time, timeline for this, but I think we're trying to meet a lot of sort of promises that have been made, you know, earlier, and we don't want to violate some of those.
Right, we also, we also are starting a social studies process, so.
Well, but I mean, I, I might just be totally incorrect, but I, we said that part of the override money was going to go to a curriculum refresh every year, so I just, I don't see the point in rushing to meet some deadline that I, I mean, I was sitting here, I was never aware of a deadline of a specific time to purchase that curriculum. Why don't we, if we're, it's a, it's clearly a very major, couple of hundred thousand dollar investment across the district, I just don't know why we wouldn't just take the extra time to be sure.
I think the timeline was set though, that it would be purchased.
Yeah, the timeline, the timeline was that we would start.
It had to be purchased by a certain date?
The way that we discussed the override and the promises we made, and the tricky thing, I'm not negating what you're saying, I think there's a lot of value behind what you're saying, but with the refresh cycle, so, you know, as Dr. Thompson said, we're starting now, Dr. Wyeth, social studies.
Right.
And we want the social studies decision by the end of the year, because otherwise we're going to be a year off. We're kind of playing catch-up this year.
So I, I don't mean to, the, sorry, that just is, how do, I don't know how you would do two, but also, isn't it just completely understood that we didn't know whether we were getting the override until the middle of June and, you know, not the middle of June, but the beginning of June, and we were supposed to be geared up and ready to purchase something by December? I mean, I, I think just rationally, and I know that we made a commitment that we would be doing a curriculum refresh, but I don't think that we ever, I mean, I just, maybe I missed it, but I never thought we said that this is the date it would be purchased by every year.
So I don't think that we made a commitment on when it would be purchased, but I think I felt like we had made a commitment on implementing, right? And so the question is, if we don't make a decision in December, and I'm not saying we have to make a decision in December, but I'm asking, you know, how far could that slip before it impacts our ability to start a curriculum in September?
Yeah, one, one way or the other, we're, we're not going to implement the program without fidelity until the fall of this coming year.
Right.
Because you have to train staff with a new program.
Right. So I guess the question is.
When do you need to purchase it to start that?
Well, not necessarily, when do we, when do we need to make a decision if we want to implement in September?
Yeah, so given our PD calendar, we're hoping at the end, the last few days that we have on our PD calendars, when we would seize the opportunity to train folks on the selected program, so that they're kind of ready to go in the fall. So December 10th is close, we could probably push it out another month. I can look at that again more closely. I think, you know, to be perfectly candid and transparent, I think the teachers want every minute of time that they can get to, to experience the, the pilots before making a decision. I think as they've kind of expressed, it feels early, December feels too early to make that kind of decision in sort of an informed way, you know, in any sort of, with any level of confidence, you know. What we, what we don't want is for teachers to say, well, you know, all three programs, you know, we got pros and cons for all three, you know, kind of be stalled there. You know, I don't think that will happen, but, you know, you just, you don't know how these things are going to play out necessarily, because they all have strengths and weaknesses, you know. Ultimately, we've got to make a decision, and we've got three good programs, so, you know, I, I just want to make sure there's a level of confidence there that when the one that they, we do end up selecting is a go, you know, and there's not going to be sort of a backlash of someone saying, well, we didn't really pilot it long enough. That would not be a good scene.
No, I agree, I'm just curious, like, you know, it would, if we really can't make a decision this year, you know, I'm not forcing people, I'm not trying to say that we should force people to make a decision before they're comfortable, but I also think that I would hate for this to go a whole nother year without a new curriculum in place.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I don't think anyone wants to do that, and that would violate the confidence probably of the public.
The normal, the normal curriculum review, pilot, and adopt schedule is a one-year schedule. I know we've, for some reason, you know, mainly deal with, dealing with funding, it has been elongated, and part of the problem is that people have stopped, started programs, not been able to buy them in the spring, but normally you start investigating programs, piloting in October, November, through March or so, and then you purchase it for April. The problem we have is if we're currently starting the social studies, we have an overlap. So if we do not start doing at least some of the PD this spring, we will have people trying to learn two different things and implement two different things completely at once in the fall, okay? And normally, when you pilot, teachers experience more than one program, okay? And what is happening this time is we're, we're trading, and thank God we have the CPT time to make that happen, so teachers are able to sit down and discuss the different programs, but we need to, we need to tighten our cycle, and we need to get it so it rotates in an efficient fashion and quickly, so.
I definitely see what you're saying about, like, and it makes sense to rotate, but I thought the idea was we would implement, so if we're going to implement the English, the ELA curriculum this September, then the history could be the, the social studies could be the following year.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm curious off of my, why are we starting social studies now?
The, we are starting, we're starting the social. The, we are starting, we're starting the social, social studies review and pilot. So, because, you know, it comes down to, we can, we can stretch this out and do what we've done, but we're not going to see changes until we give teachers new curriculum in their classrooms.
Madam Chair, I don't think anyone is saying to elongate it. I think we're just saying do one at a time. So I'm just saying, to me, and I mean, unless I'm mistaken, is that why don't we finish the pilot for this year, and as you said, go till March, right? And maybe make a decision in March, do the PD training at the end of the year to then implement ELA in the fall, and then spend next year doing a pilot of social studies, purchase the social studies in March, and that seems like a logical cycle. I just don't understand why we're crunching ELA, which is where we have a major issue in this district.
Right, well, we will, we will be off schedule for having our social studies, our social studies curriculum up to the standards.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think, you know, with all due respect, I think we can, the plan is to, for our social studies, we're right now identifying vendors to come in and present to us, so that we can say, okay, let's go with, let's pilot X, Y, and Z programs. And that piloting will probably happen in the fall next year.
Right. So that's, that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, to pilot that this year would be too much for the elementary, they just lose it.
Right, so it's, yeah.
That's just a different timeline than I have in my notes, which is fine.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so I, what does that timeline say?
Well, I'm trying to find it in the action plan, but when we met to go over the long-term agenda, we placed social studies on the long-term agenda. I don't have that with me right now. I'll look, but I, I just know that's not what we're going to talk about. But I, again, revising is fine. I mean, one theme, and this will probably come up more at our next meeting, Dr. Thompson, when you take us through the strategic plan update. I do think there's a lot going on, and I've been pretty vocal from the beginning of the strategic plan process that I felt like there was too much in year one. And as everybody updates their benchmarks, we'll see where everybody is. But I think on the 20th and beyond, we might have to have a conversation about adjusting timelines. And I don't see that as anything negative or a failure, as part of the strategic planning process. I don't know any organization or business or company that sets out to do everything and gets it done, like you always adjust strategic plans. So maybe this curriculum refresh is part of that discussion that we come back to. But one question I had, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in terms of like the piloting and how other districts do it, I had met with Stephanie one-on-one before she came to our meeting at the Coakley, and one thing she had shared with me was, most schools, they pilot the whole year, but they also have PD money over the summer. So then the teachers get trained over the summer. We don't have that ability. So that already kind of compresses our curriculum process, correct?
Yeah, 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 I mean, it really, it depends on how big a program you're piloting. I think, you know, a program like this, I mean, our math program, when we adopted the math program, we piloted it for, piloted it for a year. Because that's a big program comparable to this. Now, can it be done in a shorter period of time? Sure, but I think, I think we're used to really, given especially the funds that are attached to these things, to really taking our time a little bit, more maybe than some other places, and making sure that it will stick when you, when you make the decision, that you've got as much consensus around that decision as possible, and you've got the time to train and implement it properly, you know. So that, it takes time, but, you know, something like Renaissance, things like that, I think are kind of a smaller chunk that can be piloted and implemented much more quickly, because it's not as comprehensive a program. It doesn't require as much PD and cost overall, you know.
So just something that strikes me is, I understand that maybe we can't do the full year because we don't have the PD money for over the summer, but there's just a big difference between six months and three months. I mean, and I also, one thing that Dr. Wyeth mentioned that is making me a little uncomfortable is that, and make sure that I'm correct, is that usual, right now, I know that we have certain teachers across the district at different grade levels teaching the different programs. But one of the things you said is that normally in a pilot, like Teacher A wouldn't just be teaching Wonders. They'd be teaching Wonders for Bit and My View to see which one to compare and contrast. Is that right?
Yeah, again, there are different pilot models that are used out there. And I'm trying to remember what we did for math. Did they pilot multiple, did the same teacher pilot multiple things? I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
That was my second, third year, I don't know.
But the, so that's why the opportunity for people to talk across pilot programs is really important. I mean, I think, I think if you think about the complexity of having one teacher pilot three different programs with the same group of kids, it's like those kids are being, wait a minute, what's happening? It's kind of crazy, but, so I don't think that is the norm.
Okay, because I guess that was sort of my question is, part of me was going to say, if the norm is that they're teaching My View and Wonders, then I'm sort of saying, well, maybe a shortened time is okay, because they would be spending less time with that normally. But what I'm hearing you say is they would dig, like, each teacher would be digging deeply into one thing. That's more what my concern is, is that-
Well, you know, a program has a scope and sequence. And so you want to experience, ideally, you want to experience the entire scope and sequence. And, you know, so we're kind of just experiencing a chunk of it. They don't get to see the end game necessarily, but, you know, they can look ahead and-
Yeah, and I-
-talk to the trainers and hear about what happens next.
And I don't mean to beat this drum, but this is where we are having a problem as a district. So I just think we want to make sure we're getting the entire scope and sequence.
Right.
So I would just like to, so given what you said about consensus and making sure that teachers feel comfortable that we're making the right decision, I want to come back to Maya's point, or question really, which was really, what's like kind of the drop dead date?
Yeah.
That we could make a decision on this? Because my other concern is, you said, cycles usually start in October. That's probably because September's probably a hot mess in a lot of elementary school classrooms, right? And I think ours started-
More teams going on.
Yeah, and so I think ours started in September, correct? And that's, at least two of those weeks are just, you don't even know the kids. The, you know, the teachers are still trying to get a sense of the kids, so how can you really be adjusting? So I'd really like to make sure we have three, at least three solid months, and so we feel like we can get some better consensus. But at the same time, be sensitive to the fact that we want to make sure that our teachers are properly trained to roll out in the fall.
So what's the drop dead?
Yeah, so let me sort of look at this a little more carefully, because I don't want to be flipped with a drop dead date. So I think what we're, we're looking to do, the PD with our selected program on January 30th, if I've got this right.
Then does that have to be then? Or could that be a PD later?
Well, see, this is the problem, you know, you're going to need a good chunk of time for that. That's our last full day, and then we've got a bunch of half-days, and some of those are parent conferences for the elementary level.
This is the, I mean, the challenge is that this, moving to a new ELA curriculum is a bigger lift than you would normally see for a slight social studies refresh, okay? Because it has not been done for a very long time, okay? So what we're asking teachers to do is going to be drastically different, no matter what program is chosen, and there will be an implementation dip. So starting the PD is, deciding and just starting the PD, you know, giving teachers a good six, seven months before they really are hitting it hard is going to help lessen that implementation dip. And as you said, this is, this is a big issue. So if you wait till September, then you have, you know, the implementation dip, you're essentially, I won't say losing, but you're not flying high straight up.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got a lot on our plate, as you all know. And so I think what we've identified for the, the training for the new ELA program, our last two half-days, so that's the April and May. And then, looking at the other things that are on our plate, it looks like the Renaissance stuff that's going on, we need time to actually look at that data and analyze that data and say, is this the program we want going forward? So one of those half-days was dedicated to that. And then we have open circle training, which we wanted to sort of implement. You know, that two was part of the override kind of piece. So all of a sudden, we have no, no more time. But I, we can look at this again and say, instead of making that decision on December 10th, we could extend it out a month or two and just figure out how to structure the conversations a little bit differently outside of these, you know, these half-days. You know, I mean, I, yeah, I think, I think if there's some flexibility on the part of the committee to extend the pilot experience, that would be a good thing. Teachers would love that, and while still meeting our end game, which is to have the program ready to implement in the fall.
Yep.
I just, I personally would be far more comfortable with extending the pilot. And I know that it will require some flexibility in terms of our days, but if we can do the PD in the spring, I mean, obviously, I'm not suggesting that we do the PD in the fall, that would make absolutely no sense. But if we can do the PD in the spring and give another one to two months, just as Joan said, I mean, you almost have to throw out a lot of that September time. So I'd, I'd rather personally, this is a massive expense, and I'd rather get it right. And also, just frankly, and I mean, I don't know, but if you're telling us, Dr. Wyeth, that teachers are feeling like they need the extra time, I'd rather give them the extra time and make sure there's buy-in, and that they feel like they're being listened to.
For the social studies curriculum, is that grade one to five as well?
Well, that's K-12.
K-12, okay.
But our middle school and high school are in pretty good places. They, you know, they've sort of gotten a leg up on that.
Yeah.
At the elementary level, we've got a lot of work to do in terms of getting things aligned to the new frameworks and finding materials that will work for people. I know that, because our materials are just old and outdated.
Do we, in the override budget, we had roughly $300,000 for, for curriculum. Do we really think that $300,000 could cover K to 12?
Yeah, 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 I think so, yeah. In fact, it may, you know, that probably will be plenty. It depends on the program we pick, but I'm not looking toward a big textbook adoption, and neither is some other members of the committee, you know. So that will save us money if we find materials that are less expensive than, you know, a big textbook that everybody's got to lug around. So I'm, I'm not worried about those dollars.
Sorry, I didn't mean to take off. You had also shared with me that science at the elementary level is also quickly approaching.
Right.
So I'm not opposing delaying things, I just want to make sure everybody understands everything that is on the document.
But, but I don't think we're pushing anything back. I mean, we're not really, we're just, because English was always going to be implemented next fall, and then social studies was always going to be implemented the fall after. I don't think any timelines are being pushed back, we're just, I mean, just logically.
I actually was hoping we were going to be implementing English this, this fall.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
No, I'm saying, months ago.
In September.
That was what I had originally hoped as well.
Right.
Right, I mean, that was our original goal.
But, you know, again, when you're, when you're dealing with a district that has continually not funded this effort for years, been able to fund this effort, I don't think we got to the pilot piece last year. And also, funding it was theoretically a problem, the budget lines that we had.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I think what threw that off was this whole, I mean, we spent gobs of time, principals, everybody, on getting that override stuff and building two different budgets and, you know.
Right, and then, and then trying to figure out how to fund the pilot last spring was going to be a problem.
Yeah, so we're hitting the ground running, and then we'll, I mean, just to me, I think that it's, it makes the most logical sense to have the new program start in September. It's coming of 2020. And then social studies 2021.
But the training piece, if we really wanted to start in the fall, we really, with this much of a change, we should start training in the spring.
Yeah, I think that's what we're all saying. That's what we're all saying.
But if we're going to lose our, our last full day, that's going to be difficult.
It's just, it's problematic when the last full day is January 30th. Like, that's, basically, you're saying, because that's the day, then you have to pick the program.
Well, I think maybe we need to maybe go back to the school calendar. Now, that would not be a popular choice, but maybe that full day gets moved to March.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think obviously, you have to do the training in the spring. But, you know, I'd rather not have the January date be the thing that's dictating this.
And I think it's definitely something we should consider when we look at the calendar for next year, is because if we're going to be on in this cycle of always doing a curriculum update each year, we need to have a later-
Once you, once you start, once you start doing it, because you're not doing a full giant deep dive, it's a little bit less, and it's somewhat more manageable. It's a refresh and not a total resurrection, which is, which is what this is.
Dr. Wyeth, did you and the principals already develop the curriculum review cycle? Or are you still working?
Yeah, no, we've, we've got at least through science and so the next couple of years, you know.
That'll be part of the update on the 20th?
Is that, is the curriculum-
It's mentioned as the benchmarks in the strategic plan in 3.4.
Is the curriculum review cycle?
Yeah, it says that it'll be developed by you and the principals and the department chairs. And then again, I'm not pushing back on changing-
Yeah, and so, you know, I just, sorry to interrupt, but I think you were right about the social studies timeline. I think that we may need to take a second look at that, because, yeah, all of a sudden, you're implementing two programs in the fall, which is going to short-circuit a lot of people.
Yeah. Which I'm not saying not to adjust, I just want to make sure everybody is on the same page, and that's why this strategic software program is going to be really helpful in making sure everybody is following the same timelines and dates. But if we push back the decision of the ELA program, and we push back the purchasing, because we had said to purchase in, in January, if we don't purchase in January, do we run up against any concerns of it not being here in time for the spring PD?
Yeah, well, that's another consideration, is how much time it takes them to get the materials in their hands. But again, that probably depends on the program that we select, but, yeah, I'll have to look at all that.
And then another question, with the foundations, when we did those foundations, I know because we were kind of, yeah, the foundations, because we were kind of late to the game with that, with funding reasons, and we lost out on the ability to have the trainers come in, because they were booked with other school districts. Are we looking at anything potentially like that with the ELA?
No, no, uh-uh, no, no. Foundations, that was, they didn't have enough trainers for, to do like K-1 and 2. And we didn't probably have enough money to do K-1 and 2 at the same time either. So we had to split that up, but this will be different, yeah, the ELA, definitely.
So what are we thinking? Did you make a motion, Mark, or I can't remember?
No.
No, Maya, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, I think maybe we should just give our feedback to the administration and have them revise, like, suggest a new timeline. I don't think we want to get in there and like set that. But I was going to ask, you know, I, you were mentioning trying to implement two curriculum changes at once, which seems like a huge problem at the elementary level. But is it possible that maybe the social studies curriculum, you know, middle school and high school doesn't necessarily have to be on the same schedule as the elementary, right?
No, that's right, yeah. So, and I, as I said, I think we're in very good shape with the 612 piece, so that, that piece could move forward, you know, for any fall adoptions.
Any further questions on ELA? Thank you, Dr. Wyeth.
Okay, so I'll, I'll come back with sort of a clarified revised agenda, timeline, I should say, for those, yeah.
So, Dr. Thompson, we have consent agenda?
Yeah, we have one donation, base state textiles, for a total of $558.25.
Go to the group, second.
Second, I'll leave her. So, hi, you didn't miss it. Who do you want to take a brief break before we go on to policy and Dr. Thompson's schools?
We'll show for a five-minute recess.
Second, I'll leave her. Hi, thank you. Mini-meetings back in session. Next upon our agenda is policy. And Joan, would you like to take us through the field trip policies we have in front of us?
Sure, I'd like permission to combine both of those items, the subcommittee update and the field trip policies, because the update walks through the changes. So, on the 9th of October, we met, we discussed, that, when I say we, I mean myself and Dr. Thompson. Teresa was excused for illness. We met and discussed a couple of things. We have two groups of students, student interns who are working with us, XN students. One is working on doing research in best practices for gift and donation policies. The other group, at the time of this meeting, of these, of this meeting, was still getting organized, but they have decided to focus on the homework policy to provide us with best practice and research around homework policies of other districts. best practice and research around homework policies of other districts. Let's update for the interns. In terms of the field trips policies, you should have in front of you two field trips. The change, the major changes that were made were, we split them into a day field trip, so where it only takes place with no overnight travel and in-state and an out-of-state or an overnight field trip policy, which is one combined policy. The big changes that we made were to split, make that split. And then we changed late night policy, we bumped that back to 11:00 PM from midnight, which means we encourage all travel to be done before 11:00 PM. We prohibited the, we are advising to prohibit private car usage. We went through and removed redundancies. We added clarifying language, which you should see in blue, in blue type. We referenced the student travel regulations and the overnight travel regulations and formatted them, formatted them, formatted the policies similarly so that they have definitions, authorizations, documentations, and general requirements for all. We also determined that no fundraising should take place prior to trip approval. So, but what this does is by default requires that the, either the field trip or the out-of-state overnight field trip receive approval from either the superintendent or the school committee prior to fundraising beginning. Do you have any questions about the changes? Go ahead.
Oh, one thing, did we really not have it in there that they had to be corey-checked?
For which policy are you looking at?
Both references. On the field trips policy on the first page, the blue is one corey-checked adult at the bottom.
So.
And then that's on the second page of the out-of-state field trip.
On the first page?
On the first page of the in, of the field trips policy and the second page of the out-of-state. It just references corey-checks. I'm just curious, do we?
If it's in blue, I do believe it is an addition.
Crazy, so.
So let me add that to the minutes. We need to have a corey-checked adult.
Yeah, I just, that's, if people ever are curious why it's important to review these policies, that's a pretty big one.
But I think, to be clear to everybody, it was always the practice.
Right.
Anyone who volunteered in the schools and chaperoning a trip follows under volunteering in the schools. So I don't want people to think that we've been sending kids off without corey-checks.
No, just random bop from the street wasn't chaperoning, but it's important to have it, I think, in writing. This is just a totally nitpicky, annoying thing.
By all means.
But where it says on the second page of the out-of-state field trip, it, a final alphabetized, you have "and" final alphabetized.
Yeah.
And it should be "a" final alphabetized.
Where are you? General requirements?
Yeah, under general requirements. And then the same grammar police on the second page of the field trips policy, it's just the "and" before the "final."
Did you give any consideration to possibly loosening up a little bit the out-of-state definition? We've talked about this at one point, like maybe establishing a 100-mile radius or something like that, like, you know, do we feel that a trip to Canterbury Lake Park or Roger Williams Zoo really rises to the level of needing a school committee approval?
We discussed Canterbury Lake Park in particular, didn't we? That was one that came up.
We did, we, we were discussing which rides we liked.
I was not adding that.
It's a good meeting.
We were, we were unchaperoned.
And please correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Thompson, but we decided that just for consistency and simplicity's sake, that at any point that you go over a state line, we would require a school committee approval.
I think what you did was just, because before it was very confusing, there was like some that said out-of-state and overnight, some that said just overnight, so what I believe Dr. Thompson and Joan did is just regular daytime in-state and then versus out-of-state and/or overnight, but.
We wanted to try to simplify the number of policies.
Because you merged four, I think, four, three into two?
Three, I think, into two.
Three into two.
Yes.
So, I appreciate the work you did on this. I would just, some suggestion. So, normal public school field trip policy, and then we have out-of-state and overnight field trip policy. I think that simplifying the title of field trip policy or clarifying it to, let's say, ordinary day field trip policy might help to, I don't want somebody to read one policy and say, wait a minute, this, and then not realize that there's also, and just to differentiate it too, because probably they seem very similar. And next, whenever we reference a policy file IJOA-1, I would prefer, if we actually spelled it out, all out-of-state field trip overnight trips should follow, out-of-state and overnight field trip policy, reference IJOA-1. So whenever we see a policy, policy JJH and JJHR, let's just put there for people that know what that policy is, so they don't like have to flip to it to figure out what it is first. That's my suggestion is to make life simpler for people reading this in the future.
So you'd like the names of the policies?
Yes, please. Yep, that's all I have. Besides that, everything is awesome.
I had one other question about the fundraising. I, I like this general idea. I think in practice, there may be things where it gets a little bit confusing because there are trips that are funded by, like, the music department has its, like, kind of student activity accounts, that it's like kids can fundraise on an ongoing basis, and so they're not necessarily fundraising for this specific trip. So I understand that, like, if there's, you know, so, but like, what do you do about some of the fundraising that kind of goes on for, like, the fifth grade, you know, the fifth grade bake sale is like, or, you know, there's like the fifth grade committee that's raising money in general for fifth grade activities and then later in the year, they're going to approve a field trip?
So, yes, exactly. There can't be fundraising for a specific trip, but there can be general fundraising that is then applied to other trips. Does that make sense? So you couldn't run a flyer for, say, like, say, one of the international trips that came before us. You couldn't run a fundraiser for that particular international trip until it had been approved by school committee, but if the, if there's a revolving fund or a booster that's working and they do general fundraising, they can certainly take that money and apply it however they like.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that.
That was the intent.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I can just go back to the, to the distance piece, and I think that, you know, it is something to consider, but you also run into the, you know, the issue is, oh, how far is that? Is that over 100 miles? Is that, you know, so there's a, you know, Google Maps quotient to that, it's like, oh, I didn't realize this was over 100 miles. You know what I mean? So people kind of know when they go over state lines, so we could go back and look at that, because I've done it, worked in a district that was right on the Rhode Island border, so you could basically go to the convenience store and you were out of state. So, you know, it didn't make sense in that we're a little more centrally located, but you are still driving about 45 minutes to get at least minimally out of state, so hopefully, if it's taking less time, you're speeding. But, you know, it's a little more of a blind people recognize, I guess.
I just want to make sure of the committee, because one of the discussions we had back in the spring was with like the days, like how many days in advance did we want the approval? So is everybody comfortable with the 60-day approval for the out-of-state and overnight field trip? Yes, okay.
I'm comfortable with that, though. The one other thing that I realized, I found the beginning of this, the main policy, a little confusing, and I know that this is the original language, I'm not believing it, but, so, it's any trip off school property, got that, which does not include games and practices in connection with our athletic programs, as well as local districts, state, regional, national music festivals and rehearsals in connection with our music program. So is that music program stuff, like, is that grouped in with the athletics? It's also an exception, or is it part of the field trip? I never, I don't understand that language.
I read it as being grouped in with athletics.
But we certainly have approved, this is the existing policy, and we certainly have approved trips to out-of-state music festivals.
We just approved an out-of-state music thing tonight with the Magicalls.
Right. But that's out-of-state, the policy Maya is referencing.
Yeah, but it's the same, it's the same language.
But it's the same language.
It's the same language.
Well, and I don't think we want to set it up so that our music program has sort of like, never comes to us for field trips. I mean, I think the athletics thing is a little different because, like, parents approve their, their child, you know, participates in a team and assume they're going to go to all those games.
So, I'm just, if I, if I could, I'm imagining that, like, when this was written, probably with good reason, that if you think about it, there's going to be things that, hey, congratulations, you guys just were selected, or, hey, you're going to be in this championship, time to go. And then aligning 60 days before this happens to let us know when, so I think that's why they gave exception to national music festivals, athletic championships, et cetera, which I think makes sense, you know? So I think that these exceptions are there for valid reason that we're probably not thinking of, that maybe these, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Thompson, maybe something happens that they can't give us that 60-day notice, and that's why there are exceptions to this rule.
I can certainly see accepting them from the timeline, but this is exempting them from the policy.
From the policy.
Right? But I know we approved the cheerleaders' trip to Florida, like, but by reading this, you'd think, like, we didn't have, we didn't need to.
Right.
Where did that whole pitch come from, Joan?
It was in the contract.
Well, it's not in the original field trip policy, though.
It is in the original field trip policy.
No, maybe it.
I can almost guarantee I did not make that language up.
No, I don't. I think it's in the student travel one, not the field trip one.
Okay, it was original language of a policy.
Right.
One of the policies that we combined.
Where it is.
It sounds just like you.
It's definitely my voice.
I would actually recommend taking that, just, this includes everything that's within the Commonwealth. I think Maya's point is correct, that the 60-day notification does not include games practices. I would also, games practices, I would recommend changing music festivals to fine arts festivals because we've had this issue with drama.
Absolutely.
We had this issue with art students. So just to be clear, which does not include games practices or fine arts festivals and rehearsals in connection with our fine arts program, in which notification of participation comes, you know, outside of the 60-day notification.
Okay, so this, so, can I just read it back to you to make sure I've got it right?
Sure, yeah.
So, any school trip which leaves the Commonwealth or country and/or involves an overnight stay, this includes overnight stays within the Commonwealth.
Yep.
I'm trying to think of a, so for all athletic.
For all games and practices, or for all athletic?
I'm trying to simplify it as we do it.
Yeah. For all athletic commitments, except, I'm kind of thinking like a banquet. Yeah.
For all athletic, for all athletic and fine arts events.
Mm-hmm. In which notification?
Notification, late notification, something along the lines of late notification should come to us, right, and like in the next school committee meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, because I just want to spell out that the 60-day notification does not apply when notification of, like, ability to participate comes outside, like, we're making an exemption for, like, if you win an award, yeah.
Yeah, you just made districts.
Yeah, exactly. You should be able to go, but they didn't let you know.
You know, all New England, you compete in the meet, the state, you qualify for the all-New England meet and that's two weeks.
But I think you want to put that text as part of the 60-day notice section, rather than as part of the definition, because, but basically, we never, our practice has been that we do not approve athletic field, like athletic, like, we don't consider the football team going to a football game to be a field trip.
Right, no.
Even if they leave school early in order to get to the game.
Right.
Right? And that doesn't go through our normal field trip policy.
Nope.
But fine arts festivals and things, we do, we have in practice considered them a field trip.
Except, not really. The METG, they go and they, we haven't had to approve that.
The only ones we've actually heard were the ones that were out of state.
Yeah.
Yeah, out-of-state ones, not in-state ones.
Like the festival competition was in New Hampshire a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And then there was the orchestra students who went to Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
So would we require athletics that are taking place out of state to come before us? And that just doesn't happen though differently, right?
I mean, I would, but.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, that's probably why we saw the cheerleading one, because that was out of state.
Yeah, right.
I'd probably just put it in there in the event it somehow starts to happen, that our, like, teams travel out of state, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
What did we just, what are we, yeah, absolutely?
Well, I don't think it's a change, because I think it's, we don't, we don't see football practice because it's in-state.
Right.
Yeah, so I think we're just saying that if it's out of state, they would have to come to us, but I don't think you need to spell that out, because that's what the whole policy is saying.
So basically, any, any school trip which leaves for out-of-state, any school trips, trip which leaves from the Commonwealth or the country and/or involves an overnight state, an overnight stay, this includes overnight stays within the Commonwealth period, that's the definition of an, of an out-of-state or overnight field trip policy. And then under authorizations, to Maya's point, permission has to be made as less 60 days in advance for all athletic and fine arts events, where notification occurs within the 60, that's not what that says, but 60-day timeframe.
Right.
The school committee will be notified at the next committee meeting.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
But now, the question is for in-state field trips.
Does not include fine arts and athletic events.
Or does it?
So, so the question is, like, do you, I know you don't sign off on every time the football team goes to a game, but do you sign off if, like, is there a field trip approval thing when the Magicalls are pulled out of school for some event and are, you know?
Nope, I do not, nope.
You don't, but I'm sure Dr. Galligan does. Somebody must sign off on it somewhere, right?
I mean, they notify people in the school, yes. The principal and the, I mean, if a field trip's leaving at the high school, they notify everybody and who's going, so the teachers aren't, know the kids are not going to be in their class.
Right, and I don't, I don't mean to parse words, but there's a difference between notification and getting approval. Like, someone, I think it might be, I think kind of what you're hearing is it might behoove us to say who must sign off on those, right? That, like, the school committee doesn't need to sign off on a athletic or, and I would also say, at the top of this field trips policy, it, right now, it's only saying music. It shouldn't, it should say fine arts.
Yep.
And even outside of that, it should also say, or school-sponsored activity, like, what about national honors? What about the kids who, you know what I mean, like, go into the Edward M. Kennedy situation, situation, it's late, Senate office. So I guess the question would be, I think it should spell out here, who is signing off on those?
So it does in the original policy.
Okay, so we should keep that. Who does it, who does it say in the original policy?
So this is the original field trip policy. The school committee recognizes that firsthand, learning experiences provided by field trips are most effective and more viable means of learning. It is desired the committee to encourage field trips as part of and directly related to the total school program and curriculum. Specific guidelines and appropriate administrative procedures shall be developed to screen, approve, and evaluate trips and to ensure that all reasonable steps are taken for the safety of participants. Said guidelines and procedures should be developed by the administration and reviewed and approved by the school committee. These guidelines and appropriate administrative procedures shall ensure that all field trips have the approval of the principal and that all overnight trips have the prior approval of appropriate administrative level.
Right, so in the new version of it, it has that it's the building principal needs to submit it to the superintendent for authorization. The question is, is do we want that for athletic?
Those are af, most of those are after school, so they're not really, they're not, I mean, so if they're going to play a game, it's usually after school. If it's a tournament game or if there's something, you know, iffy about scheduling it, for instance, because you might see a few people leave earlier now that we've turned the clocks back, but, you know, that's really, you know, for athletics and it gets a little tricky with the Magicalls going to sing for everybody in town.
But to Ma's point, do we want some, do, should there be a point that can say, I'm sorry, the Magicalls are students first, so they can't do their 21st appearance in December? You know what I mean, during, you know what I'm saying? Like, do we want there to be some sort of check and balance so that they're not continuing to, I don't think they're, they're really doing that much, but.
Well, doesn't Kathy have to give the approval?
Mm-hmm.
So, so this is alluding to those procedures, so what are the procedures? Where are they?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back to the high school, but, I mean, they notify, they, there is a notification at the high school for, for when they're going to go and do these things. They notify the other teachers and the administration that they're leaving, whether, is there a form that's filled out? I can't answer that right now. I can't answer that right now. But they do notify that they've been asked to do this, and they make arrangements and transportation and all that kind of stuff, so. You know, and there's, there's little field trips, too, like, for instance, the robotics classes went down to Norwood Hospital to do a collaborative project, but that is what they're doing in their class, so, and they walk down the hill, you know?
So are we adding an additional step here that was not there before, that all field trips have to be authorized by the superintendent?
We're, I don't believe we're actually adding, we may be adding, I think, I do, my interpretation is the original policy did call for that, but perhaps we were not doing that in practice, for all field trips. Now, I think that the point is, what's a field trip?
Right.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So-
I mean, taking a period and walking down, when you normally have class, and going down to Norwood Hospital, is that a field trip?
It's off-school property.
It usually requires a parent permission slip, right? Because you're removing the child from the school.
Yeah.
I mean, I signed permission slips so that my kids could walk around the neighborhood by the Prescott, for, you know, walk to student, walk to school day and stuff.
Right.
They were, you know, never more than five minutes from the school.
Yeah, I mean, the, the intent here is not to make this more cumbersome, the intent is to have it match practice.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess we're also examining practice and going, well, why are we saying this for athletics and not this for our fine arts programs?
So can I make a suggestion? I don't know if people would be amenable to this, but I'm just looking at the regular field trips policy, under where it says authorization, I would recommend removing the for authorization by the superintendent, I think, for just regular, in Massachusetts, day field trips, the building principal signing off on it seems to be enough, and I would recommend including language, saying that outside of regular games or performances, that, and I'm not sure exactly how you want it, that, any, any trip made by our fine arts program or athletic program must be signed off by the athletic director or fine arts director, which they're doing anyways. Like, I'm sure if Jen Hartnett wants to take the magical somewhere, Kathy Moen is saying yes or no, like, someone is saying yes or no. And I think just outlining that, it's one of those sort of weird things where we all kind of assume just because it's practice, it's somewhere in a policy, so let's just take the rational policy, the practice, and put it into the policy language.
Just the one thing that we talked about in our last policy meeting last week, and I didn't have a chance to take up the minutes yet, but we were talking to Karen and Dr. Thompson more around, like, our fundraising and donation policies, and how we need a system to keep track what is fundraised and donated, and we just started to look at a form. So going back to this, do we need the clause, I know it says, like, you can't fundraise without the trip's approved, you can't fundraise until the trip is approved, but then, if we're saying now that the trip is approved by the principal or the director, how will we then ensuring that the form that we want to create and policies that we're working on get to Dave, because that's what we ultimately want, that Dr. Thompson is signing off on, and Karen is getting all these forms? So is it a clause that the building principal or director can sign off on the field trip, unless fundraising is involved, and then it has to escalate to Dr. Thompson?
Well, the field trip would be different than the fundraising, right?
Yeah.
Be a different policy?
Right.
But you can't fundraise until you have approval.
Right.
Yeah, but then, once you have approval, just look at what our fundraising policy is.
So your field trip would be different than the fundraising policy, so, see, you could put, see fundraising policy or something.
Yeah, once trip is approved, see fundraising policy, X, Y, R.
Oh, policy, right.
Okay.
So we are talking about how important it is that our whole entire book is audited, which, you know, I've been trying to do over the last three years, and Dr. tried to do before me, and to be candid with everybody, it's really impossible for a school committee member to do it. The amount of work that it takes is, is just-
And you don't have access to the information either. I mean, like, you know, it, it's a question of, you know, what is our practice, that involves talking to administrators and, you know, lots of people in different buildings, and that's not-
Your trousers.
No, it's not our role.
Our role, yeah.
But it is our role.
But policy.
Policy is our role.
But, and, but this book, I guarantee, no, but procedure is based on policy. But this book desperately needs to be audited, and this could be a discussion for another night, but I think we ultimately have to look at getting help with auditing out policies, because, I mean, we just spent so much time on one policy that is just a small slice of the updates that need to be happening.
Maybe we're going about this the wrong way, maybe it's, we should be, I don't know, looking at the administration to say, like, look, this policy, as we can see, last got updated in 1994, what has changed language-wise, what has changed practice-wise, what is normal, what is recommended, and then, you know, hey, this is the policy we've got, we recommend combining, changing, and then we, we would suggest and vote on it, rather than trying to almost come at it from not having experienced these things in practice ourselves.
Do you get, MASC has, do you get those?
Yep. What if we just, I'm sorry, I'm very much into the concrete language, authorization, ordinary day trip requests must be submitted at least four weeks in advance, but sponsoring teachers, building principals for authorization by the superintendent or their designee. That's really what we're talking about, you designate who signs off on athletic events, you designate who signs off, that, and that pushes it, the policy, the buck stops with you, but you push that into procedures as to how it actually happens for practice.
I like that.
We should do all meetings at 10:00 P.M.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't want to just start, don't start it.
To approve with the amended language, as Joan just outlined, and we've just outlined over the last, I don't know how long, I don't know what language we amended, but amended language.
I can, I can amend, yes.
And then we'll look at it again next meeting before we approve, right?
No.
Yeah, or we could just say, go make the amendments, and I guess we can talk about it down on 20th, right?
I was just trying to speed it up, because don't we have to vote on it, and then it has to be posted for a certain-
No, only new policies have to be posted.
Oh, okay.
This is just, I believe, just edits a policy, so if we prove it, it can go.
Table until next meeting when we look at the amended language.
With the amended language.
Okay.
Secretary.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
No, it's 10:00, we didn't start till 7:30, though, we keep that.
I'm sure it's 7:00.
So we do need to talk about superintendent goals. So, Dr. Thompson and Maya, and Dave, started to do some work, you should have a draft of goals in front of you. Do the three of you want to just quickly outline for the rest of us what you've worked on so far?
What?
Put the flag in, who wants to go first?
Am I yes, if you like, or I can read it off?
All right, so, you know, we are required to have district improvement goals, student learning goals, and professional practice goals. The guideline is to have three to six goals, after some discussion with Dr. Thompson, we kind of came to these suggestions. One thing that I think the committee should keep in mind is that there's sort of this focus on SMART goals, things that are measurable, and, what is it, specific, attainable, relevant?
Timely.
Timely. So, I don't know that we've exactly hit the SMART target for each of these things, but I think that this is, you know, a good suggestion, so, just, you know, for district improvement, one, surrounding the strategic plan and monitoring that, which is a huge process, one involving contract negotiations, I mean, we didn't want to set this up that we have to come to agreement on all the contracts by a specific date, because that was going to, like, we didn't want, if something hangs up for some reason, we didn't want that to negatively impact Dr. Thompson's evaluation, but obviously, that is a huge undertaking for this year, and so we thought that contract negotiations with the five unions should be part of his goals. For student learning, we have instructional strategies, we have implementation of the student assessment system, and then for professional practice, he has leading an administrative book club, book discussion group, and then school visits, and, like, trying to make sure that he gets into the schools on a regular basis. So, we should kind of give feedback on these goals, talk about if we want to tweak them at all, and then the other thing is that we also need to talk about which-
Indicators.
-indicators we want to use, and, you know, there's this new rubric from July 2019. And the recommendation is that we choose indicators that are related to the goals, so that it all kind of flows together.
Right. So we need three to six goals, but you have six goals proposed.
Yes.
We need six to eight indicators, and each indicator has four indicators, each, I'm sorry, it's four standards, each standard has to be represented in the indicator.
Yes.
So, three to six goals, 68 indicators.
So I did a little bit of highlighting of possible indicators, but I think maybe we should start the conversation about goals before we-
Yeah. I think the two district improvement goals are very important, I think those are largely, you know, built into our strategic plan, and also what we have to do, contract negotiations, so the work has to be done anyway, should definitely be reflected in his goals. My only question, and I asked Dr. Thompson this the other day, with the district goal of facilitating and recording the strategic plan, is that 80% completion attainable. You know, as we started to talk about earlier, there's a lot in that strategic plan, I personally think, in the next couple of weeks, bless you, we might be adjusting that, so I didn't know that 80% was the right number, or if 70 was more attainable, it's always better, in my view, to go above, than, you know, to be back here in August and saying, you know, we didn't reach that 80%, or as a committee, are we open to, you know, at the mid-cycle, reevaluating that 80% and possibly changing it then?
I think you're right that we can reevaluate mid-cycle, I mean, part of the new superintendent evaluation process is that we are supposed to kind of have a, an update mid-year, January, February, I would guess, and so we can, we could adjust at that time. For the contract negotiations, one of the things that would be measurable would be regular updates at, and this says at each school committee meeting to the committee and executive session on the progress and outcomes, I would suggest that we actually back that off and say, like, at least monthly, because that maybe that, you know, like, I just don't want to get ourselves like, well, we have to talk about this every single meeting.
Right.
There might not be news.
Can I ask a question about student learning goals, the first one?
Mm-hmm.
The third bullet down, principal assessment of progress and next steps for year two of the, year two of this goal, can you talk a little bit more about what you mean by that one, because that seems huge to me?
Dr. Thompson proposed this, so-
Yeah, I mean, you know, instructional leadership and, you know, instructional strategies, I mean, that's gonna be an ongoing conversation, that's probably a three-to-five-year goal in reality, if you're looking at every single aspect of instructional strategies and effective instruction in the classroom, you know, and it's something that the superintendent works through the building leadership to do, so my work with the principal and their work with their staff, I'm not in every single classroom, every single day, or even every single week, I do not have the closest of a relationship that a building principal would have with his teachers, and, you know, we have different, each school's different, some schools are in different places on those, for instance, the, the middle school did a lot of work around the Rebus, Rubus, it's after 10. So, the Rebus book on instructional strategies, they already have a set instructional format that they use at the middle school in every single classroom, so saying, we're all gonna do the same thing at the same time is not really applicable, so letting-
But I'm trying to figure out how we would assess you on that, like, what is measurable about that, because to me, if you're, if you're evaluating the principal's assessment of their progress and their next steps for the year two of this goal, then you actually have to go, you act, we would need to know the goals, right, that they're all hitting, aiming for, and then we would need to know where their progress is at. It just seems like it, it's one sentence, that seems like it could be huge, and I'm trying to figure out how we set something measurable in there, like, what would we use to evaluate whether or not you hit that goal or not?
Yeah, that's good, well, because, especially as we don't normally set, we set one-year goals and don't normally do that until September, so that, I can see your point in that.
You mean specifically the sentence, or the phrase, the principal assessment of progress and next steps for year two of school, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, how would we assess whether or not that, that's been hit?
Uh-huh.
Well, I mean, I, I, I mean, I assess their performance each spring, and, and part of that is, is I would make recommendations for what they should work on next.
Should we be privy to that, though?
That's the problem, right, that's the problem.
Well, is this a place where, and I don't know, but is this a place where asking principals if they're willing to write-
Like a self-assessment?
A self-assessment, or just to contribute something that they know is gonna be shared with us, because that came up, you know, in, in this last year process, that we wish we had more feedback from principals, so can we ask if they're willing to participate in that way?
Yep.
It's a really fine line, because certainly, we are not supposed to be seeing anybody's individual evaluation.
Yeah.
But I know that with previous administrations, there had been times that administrator evaluations were neglected, and I think it's really important for us to know that they're happening, and so the question is, how do we get evidence that it's happening without actually seeing the detail of the evaluation? And so, I think that was part of one thing we were sort of talking about, was like, well, maybe we're kind of, we don't need to see the evaluation specifically, but we need to know that you had a conversation, and you came out with these goals for the next year, because it seems like maybe that's easier to talk about, rather than, you know, so I think that was kind of where we were going, but I agree, it's worded poorly, and it could use help.
Yeah, this is a draft based on our conversation a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, so, yeah.
And then the same question for the last bullet in that, begin planning as an admin team for building-based instructional rounds, I would just like for that to just be just a little bit more codified, like, a little bit more measurable, and that, that's easy to do, like-
Right.
Provide evidence of five, four, I'm just making words up, because it is after 10, but four agendas where you demonstrate progress towards building-based instructional rounds. But if one of your goals is to actually do instructional rounds-
Right, I was curious.
Can we just, can we just strike that, because, I mean, your plan, if there's poor planning on that, then the instructional rounds aren't gonna go well, and that's just painful for you.
Yeah, we've already done, and, and we did them-
So can we just strike that?
You know, we did them last year, and it actually was the leadership team that wanted to do this, and to learn as a team and see, so it, it was not part of the original plan. And, you know, we didn't get around, it was just, it was impossible to get around to every single school, but what I'd like to do is get to a point where we're actually doing that, principals are leading that in schools, and we did have a school last year that did do that last year. So it's getting it, you know, it's getting the administrators comfortable enough to lead it in their own building. It's one thing if I'm leading it, or if someone who's comfortable is leading it, but there's every single principal at that level yet, so.
So then maybe it's create plan for the following year's instructional rounds, so that you've got two done that next year, and then you've already got your plan for the following year.
Right.
Or are you trying to already capture the work that's been done around the planning?
I'm trying to continue the work that's already been done.
Right, but in terms of evidence, so what's gonna be, what we evaluate you on, because work has already been done with your team, correct?
Well, I'm hope, I'm hoping I can, I can do some more schools this year, as administrative team, and get administrators to start the process of doing it in the building, so.
Right, I, I think we kind of came up with this because we would like this to touch all eight schools, there was no way that we could have Dr. Thompson participate in instructional rounds in eight schools, and so, it's like, how do you, like, you know?
It, it, I'm just, it's just semantic, so I would just say, you know, produce plan as an admin team for building-based instructional rounds, because isn't that something we can be handed?
Yeah.
Versus begin planning, like what exactly does that?
No, I agree, yeah.
And I would make it even more specific and have it be for like the next school year. Or if you want, I mean, create the plan for the next, for all, that encompasses all the schools. But given what our goals are to be more specific this year, I think we should try to be as specific as possible. I just said the same thing. Two reasons, sorry.
We understand. Right. You get a total buy just like I do after that one. Just so you know.
I know it's been talked about the development train, building-based trainers, top for PD and house, but is February twenty the, the target? Like that's a cheap goal, that soon?
Uh, Dr. Wyatt, our Renaissance champions will be done by February, correct? Or?
Yeah, yeah. December fifteenth is the last of the three dates.
Yeah.
Again, so it's specific to Renaissance PD?
That is.
Well, it says the assessment system.
Assessment system.
But we should specify Renaissance. And then I know I talked to you about this with Dr. Thompson, but the administrative book discussion, your professional practice tools, and the course that you're doing with Tony and Travis. I know you don't know at this time what that project's going to be, but you are working towards a project, a collaboration event.
Right.
So I think that should be in here somehow, cause that's gonna be a significant.
Yes, but we're gonna start it in February and it'll go all the way through to like the next January. So it's kind of like between two cycles.
Well, under the new rubric, you're allowed to have multi-year goals. You just have to specify what is in each year.
Okay.
But if you're, if you're gonna be spending a lot of time on that and it's a collaboration
Right, yeah.
with Tony and Travis. And I know we have to get into the standards, but some of the standards do touch on community collaboration.
Yep.
So I, I.
Would you rather see that than the, than the, because I, I won't talk about trying to purchase the books, but that's our, that's the start of the day.
Well, I mean, I personally think
Yep.
for the value of the school system and the town, that project you're working on probably provides more insight. I mean, I know you still have to facilitate the monthly discussion for the course, but.
Yeah, the, the program is called Leadership Matters, so.
So Theresa, you're proposing that in place of the first professional practice goal?
Yeah, still connected to the Leadership Matters, but instead of focusing on the book discussion, focus more on the projects, the collaboration that Dr. Thompson's gonna be doing with Tony Mizuko and Travis Marley. And once you know, I mean, it's, you know, we can be more specific in our mid-cycle review, once he knows in February what that timeline's gonna be. And then we can say for sure what we want you to produce by June and then we'll know what also carries over into year two.
Okay. I'll work on that and try to get it in the draft.
In terms of making the last one measurable, um, the school visits, uh, do you have a, a target?
Have a target?
Like a goal of how many school visits and how frequently?
Basically, right now, what I am, you know, doing, attempting to do is at Tuesdays after our central office meeting, I spend an hour and a half visiting at least one or two schools. So sometimes that gets blown up by a crisis, but that is, uh, that's the plan. I block that time out on a weekly basis.
So spend one hour per week in, in a school?
Yep.
In the, within the district?
What would that look like? How many weeks? I'd like to give some wiggle room for emergencies and I'd like to make sure that that gets spread across all the schools.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So like,
There's like.
I don't know how many weeks there are in a school year.
Roughly thirty-eight?
And how many schools do we have? Do we need to get to?
Nine.
Can I use my calculator?
So like four visits per school?
Per year.
Year per year?
Yeah.
Visit each school at least four times?
Does that also imagine you go to, you go to special events at the schools all the times too, all the time too?
Yeah, I'm not counting that. So this is.
I know you're not counting that, but, but, okay, wanna give you the, I mean, you know, like that gives you some flexibility too.
And does, can we feel comfortable with it? The evidence in part is that he's keeping the journal of findings and questions?
And I was thinking that that didn't need to be, um, super detailed. We're not looking for like a three-page narrative after each visit. I was thinking, I had actually suggested it was more like a sentence or two, like, you know, attended faculty meeting and discussed such and such.
Right.
That's enough. Or, you know, visited third grade classroom.
Had a lot of fun. Finger man.
Yeah, yeah.
We want photos of every classroom.
So what's our next step with this?
We have to go through standards and indicators.
Okay.
I know mine actually highlighted some. I, I highlighted a few. I don't know if other people had a chance to look through the rubric.
Do we wanna keep this on now? I know we've gotta get it done at some point is the problem, but it's also.
I feel like we'll make more progress if we have something to edit in front of us. I don't know how we do that, but.
Well, maybe Theresa and I could just give you our list of the ones that we were interested in and then you guys could provide some feedback. So Theresa, for indicator one, which ones were you looking at?
Yes, the ones that I thought as possibilities, um, Yep. So I was looking a lot at one B under instruction indicator. And I thought like two or three could work well, either quality of effort and work or meeting diverse needs. But then I was also looking at one E two, which is under data-informed decision-making indicator, the plans and goals.
I have that one highlighted.
One E two?
One E two I have highlighted. I have, um, one D three, which is observations and feedback, makes multiple visits to each school to observe administrator practice and provides quality feedback, which seemed like it just kind of fit into what we were talking about with some of those. I had one C one, which was, um, variety of assessment methods. Ensures all principals and administrators to use a variety of formal and informal assessment methods. And it seemed like that might go well with the Renaissance work. And then I had one B three, meeting diverse needs.
Yeah, I had that one too, the one B.
Yeah, I, but I liked all of these.
I liked all the Bs also, yeah. Yeah. I felt like the B was very much not only in your goals, but also very much embedded in the strategic plan. Plus it came up a lot in our evaluation this previous time of we wanted to see more work done around the instruction and the diverse learning and the inclusive nature of the practice. So.
And then for two?
So I had, uh, two A one, which is environment, uh, plans, procedures and routines. Cause that's a lot of adjusted lives around the, um, safety work in our strategic plan. But I also had A three, which is around social and emotional wellbeing. Actually have a lot for two that I could go with. I had two C, um, which is scheduling and management, uh, information systems indicators. I like both one and two tie for teaching and learning as well as time for collaboration.
Yeah, I had the time for collaboration, two C two.
Two C two. And then I had, uh, two D one around, um, policies and laws. Just thinking a lot of the policy work, making sure that the procedures are in compliance with the policy. That's why that one stuck out to me. But then I also had two E one, which is your fiscal systems indicator, uh, which is around your budget, which I think is pretty important.
Yeah, and I think that definitely ties in with the, um, the strategic plan.
For three, which is the standard three is family and community engagement. I just highlighted two right now. Um, three A two, which is around, um, the engagement indicator, community and stakeholder engagement. And then also three D, the family concerns, but I had a question mark because I wasn't sure if it really tied into the goal piece. It does tie into the strategic plan, but.
I had three B one, which is student support, provides resources, professional development and related supports to enable the identification of each student's academic, social, emotional and behavioral needs, including students with disabilities and English language learners. Supports administrators to collaborate with families to address student needs. It seemed like, it, I don't know that that ties in directly with our goals, but it certainly are things that we've been talking about. But maybe that's like a next year kind of thing.
Those three Bs of?
Three B one.
Yeah, I had a hard time honestly with indicator three. Couldn't, standard three, couldn't figure out what I wanted.
Yeah. And then four?
Four, I had four A. There's a couple and I like them all. So four A is promote success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations and continuous learning for staff. And then A one is commitment to high standards. A two is mission and core values. And A three is around effective meetings. So I thought any of those fit into, um, a lot of our work. And then also for C, um, around communication. Um, and this one I, I highlighted because it came up a lot in our last evaluation around different modes of communication. So I didn't know, it seemed the committee felt very strongly about it last time. So I didn't know if we wanted to work it into the evaluation system officially this time. But what did you have for four?
I had, um, A three on meetings. And then I had D one, which was continuous learning of staff, which I thought would like, um, sets it expectations for administrators and teams to reflect on and collaborate around the effectiveness of a wide range of practices related to instruction and student learning. So I thought that fit neatly with the instructional rounds and stuff like that. So you want me to type this up and send it to everybody?
Yeah, and I can send you what I wrote too. It makes it easier for you. Cause then ultimately we do have to pick again, three, or no, six to eight indicators, at least one indicator for each standard. And then there has to be evidence from the standard as well or just the goals?
The standards as well.
Right, yeah. So just quickly in terms of a timeline, because I know November is crazy.
Every day is crazy.
So we meet again the twentieth. I, I, this is on that agenda as well. I was hoping we wouldn't go too much further. It's a new school year without finalizing it, but maybe we do, maybe it goes another, another meeting. But do, do you need time to sit down together to work more or can just get down more?
Yeah, I think we probably should flush out what kind of, cause we need to talk about the evidence and how it's all gonna fit together. Cause ultimately the evidence should be what we're doing in our processes and not
Right.
a whole bunch of extra stuff.
Yep.
Quite honestly, with the strategic plan and everything else we're trying to do is gonna be difficult to.
Well, ideally we find things that are part, that are related to the strategic plan anyway and that we're already tracking through the software with, for the strategic plan.
Right.
Then at the end of the year, it's just a matter of pulling pieces that are already exist.
Right. Yep. We'll, we'll probably get some ideas at the conference this, this week too, so.
Any other feedback at this time? All right, did you want to give a quick update on the meeting we had at five?
We had a meeting, uh, with the joint facilities task force. We did look at the, um, a value of the budget projections and kind of see how that would be tied out. We kind of came to the consensus that the best thing to do is to treat the facilities as a third department. And that I think will be most beneficial to everybody. And there's still work on MOU. I gave my own personal feedback on the MOU. In particular, talked about, um, needing to call out how things, more details about how things would work in the first year. And so David Ajar is planning to come up with a appendix attachment. I forget what A word we were using to talk about the, the thing that was gonna be.
Addendum.
Addendum, thank you. What A word was it?
Right there on the next line.
But if, if people do have feedback on the MOU, they should be sharing it with Dr. Thompson sooner rather than later. So we have more, cause we meet again November twenty-first as that committee.
Is the feedback that we provided on the MOU from the last, like, is there a new version? Cause we provided feed, did we provide, we provided feedback a meeting ago, two meetings ago?
I didn't get anything.
I don't remember that.
I will resend whatever I sent.
Okay, yeah.
But there hasn't, I, I think really my question is, is there hasn't been a new MOU distributed?
There's no, no, it's the same draft.
It's the same draft?
Yeah.
All right, I will send my feedback. Yeah, cause that's how we got this. We talked about this before.
I, you had questions, but I didn't know if you actually had like changes, amendments to the language.
Oh, yeah, I'll resend that to you. Maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't send, maybe I didn't put that, uh, maybe I forgot to attach the doc, the document.
Oh, okay. Or maybe I just didn't notice that there was an attachment. Okay.
Yeah, I had some feedback.
Okay.
Any questions on that committee at this time? I'll give you the super fast update on school start time. It's broke back five minutes. So as you know, we sent out surveys to students and parents. We did have a really great response. We had one thousand five hundred and fifty-three parents respond.
Wow.
Which for a survey is a high number. Um, there were six hundred and thirty-two parents of elementary school students, four hundred and eighteen of high school, three hundred and thirty-nine of middle school, one hundred and eleven of kindergarten and fifty-three three K. So it was a pretty good distribution of how many students in each cohort. And then, um, we had, uh, one thousand four hundred and fifty-one middle school and high school students take the survey. So we have a lot of data that we're working as a task force to really go through, analyze, put together in a way that makes sense. Ryan Quigley and Margot Frazek are helping me with some things. Dr. Galligan sent out a survey to other high schools. So we surveyed twenty-nine other high schools on if they changed their times, if they're thinking about it. So we'll share more updates from there. And then another, uh, survey results that we're working on. We're gonna be surveying the staff, um, next week. So eventually we will have a lot of really good data specific to all different, you know, people involved in this process to share with you. We have eighty-four pages of written responses from students and parents that Margot and Ryan are very nicely coding for me because I said this is my limitation. I cannot do this by myself. I need help with that aspect. So they're going through eighty-four pages of written responses and coding it. So we can make more sense of that for everybody. We're working on an FAQ page for the website. We are also, um, gonna have a lot of research up there. So once that's done, of course you will know. But what I'm going to do is create a Google folder on our drive that the task force can also access with everything in it, cause it's a lot of paper and I don't think we wanna really be printing all of it out. But we do, oh, we are still working towards the goal of coming to the committee in January with a recommendation. And, uh, Conley is coming to our next meeting, um, to help us analyze bus routes more. So that's a quick update for you. So school committee addenda?
Uh, sure. I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone who participated in Fantasy Footsteps. It's a two-weekend event. Um, I had the opportunity to come down. It was a lot of fun. And it, um, just continues to provide the community with a non, uh, scary Halloween event. And just congratulations to everyone in that. And I also, also wanted to congratulate the marching band who, um, placed first, I believe, in the statewide competition yesterday and received high accolades in all categories. So congratulations to the students and staff who, uh, participate in that. And that's it.
I have nothing tonight. Sorry, I'm like drinking coffee.
I have nothing at this time.
Yeah. I echo Maura's, uh, comments and congratulations and also again echoing.
And also, again, echoing Manny Lobes' congratulations. I mean, football coach of the year, that's pretty awesome. So way to go, man. You make us proud.
So just one last thing, I think we may know the extended day program is having a book drive from now until November 22nd. So they are taking books for kids from kindergarten through fifth grade. It can be free-to-use books. So if you're like me and you have lots of books, but you don't know where they can go, I now know where all my books are going. Do we need to go to executive session?
School safety's on there right now, yeah, so.
Okay, did we need to upen the contracts?
A little bit.
Yeah, okay. So we are going to, if there is motion, if the committee agrees, to go into executive session. There's a purpose of discussing contract negotiations as well as school safety.
So moved?
Second.
Second, and then?
Goal.
I know, but how do I phrase it again, that we're coming back just for the point of a German? Does that have to be in the motion, or what I said works?
Exactly.
Okay, great. So Maura?
Yes.
Hiya.
Yes.
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 And yes. All right, thank you.